Welcome everyone to the January 4th, 2022. Meeting of the Barrington Planning. Tonight in attendance, we have Andy Melnikas. Ron Allard, Donna Masucci, Jeff Brand, myself, James Genison, Andy Knapp, Code Enforcement Officer John Huckins, Land Use Administrative Assistant Barbara Irvine, and Town Administrator Connor MacGyver. Joining us remotely, we have Carol Ogilvy, who's our planning consultant, Steve Diamond as well is joining us remotely. And we have a few other people in the audience tonight. First on the, do we have? I'm two. I guess I want to identify voting members and all. We have. Do we have a seat for Donna? Is Donna? We're missing, we're missing Buddy. So Donna can sit in as voting member for Buddy tonight. Want to make sure I always skip that part? First, the agenda is for petition articles. Does the board have any discussion? Hearing nothing from the board will open public comment. If you want to speak, please come to the computer. Name and address, please go forward and sit where we can see at the table there, please. This is for you? Yep, there, thank you.
The purpose of this proposed amendment.
Identify yourself first, please.
Steven Jeffrey. And 28, Lance Rhodes.
Mr. Guy, am I to you? Oh, there we go. Thank you.
It's got. I get it easier.
Can you hit the mic? Turn your phone down, Steve.
I can hold on to it.
The purpose of this amendment is to protect wetland buffer. For, in House of May Road. Plans indicated an increase in wetland buffer impacts. Town defended the issuance of the building permit for this property claiming that 951. Since the property has buffer. The issuance of the building permit for my point property is approved is prohibited by 9512. Existing built within the buffer area. Maybe in a added the newest sector. Against permeable surfaces, so not extend further into the effort. The original foundation. The original zoning ordinance, that one spot was explained to be an overlay applicable to the entire town. There was never any discussion that wetlands and wetland buffers would only be applicable to lots. To created such. Such a concept would violate purposes of zoning. The town is allowed, is allowing the term improved included in Article 9515. And to interpret this article to apply to improve property created prior to 2001. The town is arguing this interpretation conforms to past practice. In the minutes of the public hearing on January 5th, 2010, Don Huckins stated that section 9515 addressed lots that were created before the passing of the changes. If it was voted in the affirmative. The lots before March 13th, 2001 were not designed for the new changes. He said some of the existing lots could meet the new requirement though. His statement implies that even unimproved lots could comply with the article to the extent possible. Huckins did not state that improved properties developed prior to 2001 were exempt from wetland buffer restrictions. RSA 67419. As far as the current zoning ordinance shall apply to changes to an existing property. RSA 6614. As far as the most restrictive provision or higher standard shall be controlled. Failure to enforce a zoning ordinance is a crime under state law. The town is the train to trust of the citizens of Barrington. Citizens of Barrington voted for a zoning ordinance expected to be enforced. Hope the planning board would support amendment.
Appreciate your commentary.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Ken Grossman, Scruton Pond Road. I'm also Chair of the Conservation Commission. Sent Barbara earlier today. The comments that I'm going to make, they got to you. But I'll read them anyhow. And I have to say as a side that the Conservation Commission has no position on Mr. Jeffries, the issue that Mr. Jeffrey has raised because it's just not something we know about. And it's just not what we know about. However, the Conservation Commission generally supports the petitioned article. We do so because adopting the article as an ordinance would seem to protect more of Barrington's natural resources than the status quo. As I stated at the previous planning board meeting in December, the Conservation Commission has long hoped to see a more nuanced wetland and wetland buffer protection ordinance based on qualitative functional criteria ranging from flood protection to the nurturing protection of diverse wildlife habitat. The commission hopes to engage in the coming year with both the planning board and the petitioners in preparing a draft order time, March 2020, the town meeting.
Thank you very much. Here in the audience. Recently, do we have anyone who would like? No hands? Thank you. One last chance for the audience here. Close public comment. Board have any more discussion? Do we have, are we deciding on the text?
No, you have, you can't change your wording at all. You're just avoiding whether you support the article or don't support the article.
Are we, are we going to include a description and definition on our take and why we do or do not support as the other articles?
I do, I believe we do for our amendment.
There was discussion last meeting to say.
A petition warrant article goes as written. Then it's going to be does the planning board support it or not support it or even if it's a split vote, it would say how many supported, how many didn't. So that's so that when people go to vote, they know how their board felt about a petition warrant article. Because it didn't come forward.
Well, the language is easy. They wanted to leave a second right, so it's not a lot of language. It's nothing to do.
You can't change the language. You can't.
Right, but usually we put a narrative below every, every proposed change. So we do for ours, but we can't. Planning board can't create a narrative for somebody else's amendment. I disagree, but I don't think it's appropriate.
Pardon me?
Carol, have you had experience with that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Typically, the planning board would not comment on a petitioned article. They simply take their vote because as John has said, you can't make any changes to it and providing any kind of a narrative to influence the vote one way or the other. So you're simply obligated to hold the public hearing and take your vote whether you support it or not.
That is my understanding of how this has been done in this town in the past.
I just, I, for me personally, I would think that as we explain every other decision we've made in the zoning for, for those that may not understand what they're voting on. As we talked about last time, it would be informative. If nothing else, exactly what this means, but hearing opposition, I don't, I don't have no, no skin in the game to push it forward, but a motion is in order.
Just clarity, if the motion was to sit, that went a yes vote, we're going to support it.
I make the motion that we put this to the votes?
I opened it up for a comment and discussion if anybody has.
I think I've wasted enough breath on my opinion.
Well, I'll say that as I stated the last time I spoke. I don't support a blanket forever exemption from any ordinance change. So. Auto applies after some period of time. That it's a blanket, all or nothing. Try to fix the problem, set some limitation. I support the spirit of the thing, but not.
So you call on you to know so we can address this.
I think working with the Conservation Commission as they propose might be something good for next year. Whether this passes or doesn't pass, something next year could change it. No.
Well, as you know, I worked, I worked on September 8th and Mr. Grossman. Tried to push something forward to payments and ended up in a box. Nobody.
We couldn't contract with anybody to do the work. Yeah. To execute what we're doing. That will play in the coming year. Possible changes in situation that might be. Anybody else?
I'm kind of leaning the other way. I mean, this exemption has been in place. The rule's been in place since 2001. So, and people get to vote on this. I don't think we're necessarily springing something on them. They, they can yes or no, if it's, if it's yes then. As you know, I've stated in the past, I didn't like this one anyway, so I think it has merit. Exemption in the first place. Yeah. And I said that in the past and I still feel.
I kind of agree with what Jeff's saying with regard to the phase in period, but I'm, I don't have an issue pushing it forward and letting the voters make their decision because it's going to be their property that's impacted.
But we, we. We don't have a choice. Right.
Oh, I know, but I don't have a problem supporting it from the standpoint to say let the vote.
We vote against it, it still goes, it still goes up the.
Right. I think given affirmative vote for it though, shows you support it as opposed to the other way around. I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but if a voting affirmative tends to show the public that you agree with removing it altogether without the narrative below, which is why I was asking about the narrative below. And that would be.
We'll have the opportunity to clarify our position at the town meeting and question.
Technically, no. Deliberative session depends on the town moderator. Sometimes he'll let someone explain an article, but you still no changes and no debate at deliberative session on a zoning article.
Sure, but there's opportunity to discuss why people like or don't like.
Sometimes not always. It's up to the town administrator. There's been some years and with the town moderator, there's been sometimes they said no. And sometimes they have allowed people to talk. And a lot of times in the past, they'll say at the end of the meeting, when this is all done, people want to stay and discuss it, they allow it, but it's not always part of the deliberative session per se.
And typically the, the folks who are part of the deliberative session are the select board members, the town administrator, legal counsel, and the town moderator. And that's usually.
Oh, you usually got about 30 or 40 people that show up in this thing. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's a lot. I'm just saying you do have a few show up. I'm going to make a motion then.
Yes. Steve wanted to make a motion.
Oh, I make a motion that we put this forward to the voters.
Motion would be that you support the article?
Yeah. Motion by Steve Diamond. Second by Ron Allard. Donna Masucci. Because you're at the bottom of my list. I apologize. Clear, it's whether we.
I started the.
Anyway, just so everybody knows what we're voting on, it's whether the board supports this amendment.
As an individual, do you support?
Right, because you're each voting individual. Yeah. Well, you're going to come up with a vote now. Yes, the question in front of you is, do you support deleting the following article 9.5.1 parent's file? I'll, I'll start with Andy M.
And I.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Andy Knapp.
Hi.
Steve Diamond.
Hi.
Jeff Brand.
Do we support deleting the 9.5.1?
Okay, hi.
James Genison, nay. Donna Masucci.
Hi.
Two, three, four, five, six, support removing 951. Do we have a list of the others?
We've got to get a second minutes.
There's no other zoning amendments. We had to have a second hearing on. All right.
What's my change?
Okay, moving on to the minutes. Let's do the December 7th here. Comments, corrections, notes on the meeting of December 7th. Hearing nothing.
Motion to approve the minutes for 12:07.
Are you making a motion? Is that what you said? He was making. I did. Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Andy Knapp. James Genison, aye, Jeff Brand, Steve Diamond.
I'm die.
Andy Knapp.
Hi.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Andy M.
And I.
Donna Masucci.
Yes.
I'll move on to minutes from December 14th.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Andy Knapp. James Genison, aye, Jeff Brand, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Hi.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Andy M. Donna Masucci. Is it my, correct that 272 and 3, Anthony Sarah, Sal Reaganese is going to ask for a continuance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Did you tell us, as we have painted it, you're dealing with comments from CMA?
Correct, we received the comments from CMA before the holidays. We've made those changes now and we're submitting them, resubmitting them to CMA and the town tomorrow, so that'll give everybody a chance to review before the next meeting.
Is this Barry?
Yes, Barry, thank you very much.
I was confused because your face is frozen, but I hear your voice. Took me a minute to register.
I thought you were cracking.
I apologize.
Date for the next meeting that.
We have two weeks for that. On those comments.
Is the 18th open for?
You don't have anything scheduled.
Is the 18th good for you, Mr. Guy, or do you want to go further out?
No, 18th would be fine. We're resubmitting, like I said, tomorrow, so hopefully everybody will have a chance to review by then.
All right, I make a motion for a continuance on application 272-203, 273-49-21.
January. January. Second. By Jeff Brand, that one?
Yes.
Second by Ron Allard, James Genison, aye, Jeff Brand. Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
Andy Knapp.
Hi.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Andy M.
And I.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
All in favor? See you in a few weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Jumping back to number two, thank you for allowing us to get that out of the way. 2364 GR-20-SR Sunset Rock LLC. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Art Pollock. I'm going to turn to Gallagher Firm in Concord. I've been before you in the past on the Sunset Rock excavation activities application. With me tonight is Eric Stevenson from Sunset Rock and Mike Wright from Rest Pack. Since our last, before the, back in November, we did have an opportunity to, CMA engineers on site. The site visit occurred on December 8th, 2021 to review not only existing excavation operations that have property for several decades, but also to review post-expansion of a five acre. On December 20th of 21, CMA's peer review report was submitted that day to the town. And you understand that Mr. Strab is on the Zoom tonight for your consultation. We're, we're comfortable incorporating CMA's recommendations for essentially monitoring activities. We'll think the expansion area elevation below 120 feet above sea level. So that's a mouthful, but essentially when we go below 120 feet above sea level, we'll be triggering the, the condition to begin monitoring and reporting that bedrock water level. And then there is an existing operations plan dating back to permits that were issued 20, 2009. And we would also accept a condition that we update that plan not only for the existing excavation area to bring forward data maybe, but to incorporate expansion area of the additional. And it was CMA's recommendation that we continue to update that on a five-year cycle. And we would have no issue with that condition as well. And so we're, we're here asking for essentially a conditional approval for those items. Also, I want to mention this for appropriate state permits, which would include the Department of Services alteration of pain. Board knows that this application has been pending without any significant revision to the application materials or the plan set since the fall of 2020. And so we're anxious to wrap things up. We're able to do so. We're here for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got one for you. I've read Mr. Strab. One thing that jumped out maybe that I want to ask you about is so, so far it appears that even though permits, the original permits allow the quarry to go to a depth of 60, about 90. They haven't done so today.
Ultimately, there'll be a market demand for all of the material that's accessible. And yes, it will occur. I think at this point, so if I'm inferring correctly, your question is, why are you expanding the quarry if you still have room to go down? And, and the answer is of course that the material that's higher and this, what essentially is a plateau left surrounded by other excavation area is easily, easily accessible than lowering the floor of the active quarry area. It's, it's, it's material that needs spec. We're familiar with it from digging next to it for years and it's right there for the taking.
Mr. Strab. One of the things that bothered me, you were pointing out the uncertainties when they start digging and blasting below the water level, which is about 120 feet. Which is where they're down to the bottom of their current. But they can go down to 36. And in the expanded area, I guess it's proposed they go down, they would be allowed to go down to 36 feet. So what are the implications, especially seeing as they're expanding out to within 300 feet of a Campbell well? One statement made in here that although it was Brock's opinion that the gap at Brock is relatively imperfect. Surprises a high barrier, and I did look at your sketches. It seems like a regular thin barrier once they get expanded. Noted that while this concept may have merit, the technical basis including the conditions to support this model has not been provided, which personally, that doesn't give me a great deal of confidence. Can you explain that statement? What is, so I mean, what is the basis for the assumption that this expansion is not going to cause a problem?
You're muted.
There you go. Is that working?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, pleasure to be with you tonight. Again, Bill Strab from CMA Engineers. I, I did most of the work in this evaluation. The quarry is, 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 it is existing permanent, as is the permit they're operating under currently. Allows them to go much deeper than the water table and the operating level of the Campbell well in Dover. But they haven't gone that far yet as you, as, as Ari has properly noted. They're getting down to that in one area. They're quite a ways away from it in the southern area. And the basic geology as described by the Brock's people so far and, and Mike Wright is, is what it is with, from what we know. And there's a massive granite structure surrounded by, to the east by major sand and gravel deposits. And the, the limit, the continuity of the bedrock to the sand and gravel deposits is partially described by some of the borings that they've done. It's not fully described by that. That's number one. So there's a profile, if you will, of a perimeter of the bedrock elevation that's partially described to date, but it's not fully described. That, there's a variety of techniques that could be used to do that. And I'd be glad to go into those a little bit later if necessary. The other thing is the, that kind of bedrock is known to be. The other thing is, the, the, that kind of bedrock is known to be very competent, is the word. Competent meaning uniform is not the right word geologically, but not, not a lot of cracks, not a lot of weathering and that kind of thing. So that the, the, the interaction between a sand and gravel aquifer on the Campbell well side and, and rock to another side is through cracks in the rock. And if there are cracks in the rock, they can transmit water. So without the cracks in the rock, or with a few number of cracks in the rock, or configurations of, that they're not wide or, or massive and so forth, it would limit the amount of water that can go through the, the rock area and from the sand and gravel area. So both those things are, are described conceptually, but there's only a, a partial information to back that up. And they, they recognize that. Now, the important thing here is the condition in the AOT permit, the Alteration of Terrain permit. They were, Mr. Pollock had talked about a, a monitoring plan, but they, the, the, as I read it, and as, as it's said in the existing permit, it talks about if groundwater dewatering from an excavation, from the excavation is required, a bedrock level monitoring and reporting plan shall be submitted and approved by the department. So we think that that should be established. The, the plan itself, technical details of that plan should be established well before they go below a water table and have the potential to de-water the, the area. So I, we, our recommendation is that, that plan be developed now, or at least before some period of time before they, they commence the excavation to a deeper elevation. And it needs to be reviewed and approved by the DES. The AOT people, or maybe others at DES, water supply people, of water supply departments, as it's a little unusual for alteration of terrain to be the department or the mechanism for groundwater protection, whether it be groundwater quality or groundwater flow. That's a little bit outside the common purview of the AOT, but that's what, that's how it's reflected now in, in, in this permit. And that's the kicker, the key, I should say, the, the trigger. So I, I, I believe the plan should be put together that proposes to gather the details that are necessary to define this relationship that we're talking about here. And that should be reviewed by DES, approved by DES, and understood and accepted under this permit with the town of Barrington. And that, and I think there's no dispute about that. I think they agree with that. But that's, that's, that's the key to this thing, is doing the work to, to, to establish the physical limits of the bedrock vis-à-vis the, the border between the sand and gravel on the Dover side. And, and also the characteristics of that bedrock as to whether it can move water or not in, in the event that the water table lowers a whole lot on the quarry side. The other, then the Dover well is, is the primary issue here, obviously, because it's a, it's a big deal. But there are other things in Barrington. There are probably lesser questions, but I think that, that same plan would address whether or not there are other potential impacts to small water supplies or other features in Barrington and, and the other towns that come together there. That's, that's less of an important question than the Dover well, but they shouldn't be, shouldn't be sidestepped either. That was a little rambling. Was that, was that satisfactory?
That certainly addresses part of my question to explain why it would be worthwhile to put those measures in place. They certainly seem warranted under the circumstances. And I understand your comment. I did note what you, that you're not only looking at the city of Dover well, but any other area wells that could be affected by a change in white, water table due to the mining and pouring. But to take one step back, I'm still a little concerned about it. So you can put this monitoring system in place to tell more or less in real time what's going on as you're conducting operations. That seems like inappropriate safety. I'm still just a little concerned by the fact that that's almost, you know, taking a picture of the horse as it's got out of its barn. I'd like to, I'm just a little concerned, like you wrote here, that we don't know enough going into this as to what, what the potential impact might be.
Yeah, I, I understand your question. And then we grappled with that very question, Jeff, is, is how that, how that operates. And rather than wait for a problem, you'd want to be able to understand the situation so you could, you could monitor whether there are effects going forward. And so you can, you can have a series of wells. Well, there's a bunch of things, but let's say you put a series of wells in the bedrock between the quarry and, 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 and the Dover line. You can monitor those wells for a response. So if, if, if the water level in the wells, the unexcavated quarry, actually bedrock that the quarry is in, start to respond in such a way that would suggest that water is moving downward, then that would be a, 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 a trigger. There are also things you can do that don't involve drilling of wells with so-called geophysical techniques, seismic refraction profiling and that kind of thing, which I would do first if it was me, because it's cheap and tells you a whole lot of information. You do a, a, there are lines that you can basically draw the profile of the rock based on seismic refraction analysis, which is relatively inexpensive and gathers a lot of information. So that, some wells for boring, for confirming bedrock height, actual pyesometers. Pyesometers are, are monitoring wells that measure water level, some series of that. And the other thing that we mentioned, we believe that the city of Dover has a lot of information about the Campbell well. There's, there's observation wells around it. We, we saw them on the 8th. Mike Wright understands they're there. And so ideally, that information could be incorporated into whatever monitoring plan comes up with here. So there's a, there's a network here of new information and existing information that one could look at intelligently to make judgments about whether there's a potential or actual impact to the well. All, all that, and it's, it's, it's not a simple matter. And, and that, that plan that we're suggesting takes some development and will take some review by DES and others.
Break your train, Rob, and Mr. Pollock, wonder.
I did. I, so the whole conversation triggers a competitive thought that we've trying to express, which is this, and it's an answer to the prior question as well. You don't want to go too far into this and make a mistake, right? And so you need some appropriate triggering event that says, okay, do we know enough to get to those depths? And part of the explanation here is, instead of going down and finding out sooner whether we know what we're doing, we can go sideways and we can avoid the depth where we know the groundwater exists, where we know we're going to intercept. Nothing is forever. We're going to get there at some point. But this gives us the flexibility to start developing that data at the same time as this application is not pending for additional time period. We, we'd like to get this AOT, Alteration of Terrain, filed with the state. We've held off on doing that. We don't want to have two different pieces of this thing in two different forms and at two different places in the process. If we were to be able to go forward with that, we'd have it in time for the spring. We'd be able to open up this area, do the surface preparation we need to start getting into the, the overburden. It's an easy place to get additional material that doesn't require that we go further down in the floors of the quarry immediately. We have time to think these things through. We're going to get conditions on the Alteration of Terrain permit from the state that address the same hydrologic concerns. They're already in the 2009 permit that Bill was referring to. We just don't have a permit yet for the expansion area because we didn't note it until recently.
I, I, that makes total sense to me in, in concept, that if they're not going to an elevation that has the potential for the groundwater impacts, then the requirement for that monitoring and reporting plan can be deferred until it does. The proposal in front of you, however, is to go to 36 feet. And so if, if there was some kind of conditional threshold elevation that's included, that might satisfy both parties.
But they can go at 36 feet now, right?
In the existing part.
Existing, yeah.
That's correct.
Well, they can, but, 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 but the, the, they can, the condition in the AOT permit existing is that if they get to an elevation where bedrock water levels can go below regional elevations, then this monitoring reporting plan needs to be in place.
So my take on this is the risks of going below the, like 120 feet or going below is there. But it seems to me this expansion area represents relatively low risk compared to going deeper. Is that a fair statement?
If they stay above 120, yeah.
That's, that's the point. The approval would be to go to 36, like the rest of it. So it would be, not, I, I don't want to use the word unchecked, but it had.
But with the surrounding this expansion area, when they go to 36 feet, that seems to me to be the risk, not this little piece in the middle that can also go to 36 at the same time. Know what I mean?
I'm not technically advanced enough to make that assumption, but I just had a question.
By, by getting the expansion permit and staying at your existing floor level, what's the project, and I find it buys you by, by picking your way across that site plan?
Staying at the 120?
Yep, by staying there, because there's a, a next, there's a certain amount of material and it gives you.
The, the, the off-the-cuff answer is years. I mean, a long time. And, and, you know, I, I just wanted to make the other point. If you look at the cross-section that CMA included in their report, existing, it looks like that. The existing surface level of the expansion area, about 200. You're talking about 100 feet of material, or you even get to what was something of an arbitrary suggestion of 120. So whether it's 100 feet, 120, 130, it's all in the name of cautionary safety to better delineate this groundwater effect before you get anywhere close to it. You've got 100 feet of material there before you even reach the arbitrary number.
Well, regarding the.
It's the mean groundwater. That's, that's, that's what we're looking at. That's not hard.
But that's the existing floor level, and it's not flooding. Well, we've got an area that's significantly lower than.
Yeah. Mr. Diamond, Steve, you had a, you had a comment?
Yes. So I understand from one of the documents that you're already doing pumping of water, even during a drought year. You're, you're doing pumping at the current level. Is that correct?
No, the, the pumping is occurring significantly lower than 120. 120 is the active quarry.
The, just a side question, the ramp coming in, the rectangular area, that's the deepest portion that I'm familiar with going in there. How deep is that? What's the floor there?
Yeah, that, that's the, the, where the water, where the pump is.
So as you're, as, as you're coming in the ramp to go load up that rectangular section to the right, the bottom floor there. Yeah, I don't even know if there's water. It's, it's a good sized square that they're working in now, I think, that floor. That's 130-ish.
So, you know, it's also 100 feet lower than the surface elevation.
Right. So, so realistically, might not even have to go to move forward with the AOT, the, the plan component that Mr. Strub is talking about for the better part of a decade or longer?
Yeah. But it's a good idea to have the condition.
Yep.
The approval, he would hope there and abide by it. We're going to get the same condition from the state anyhow.
Right.
And first idea to start developing some data so that have an intelligible plan when we reach it.
Well, what about with respect to Bill suggesting that there is a relatively low cost way in which to better characterize that bedrock wall?
I'm, I'm, I don't know the answer to that.
Can you, can you, so I can get, if on this diagram, like A, where you drive in and pick up material, what, what's, what's the elevation of that? You know, when you come down the hill, here to pick up, you know, three quarter crushed or whatever.
That is at 145.
That's 145. So the bottom of this area.
It's approximately 25, 35 feet deeper.
Okay. Saying is where the. Pardon me?
Lower areas, 120.
Again, just, I'm getting, you're saying this, this rectangle notch there, yes. Got this square here, 120, and so that would be 35 feet higher?
Right.
What's the? We got 140, 120, 110?
You're at approximately 135 up here, 125, 120 down here. Everything's tilted. We don't have a flat floor. We have a pitch that moves everything over to the hole. The, the water level in the hole is probably at your 110 number that they're discussing.
I, I mean, I stood at the top of it and it's far down.
That's, that's my feeling. That's why I'm trying to get numbers in my head, because when I'm driving in and I look over the side, I wouldn't want to tumble down there. 35 feet, I'd take a sled ride, but I wouldn't slide down that.
I, I would, I didn't go close enough to the edge to get an accurate depiction, but it's far down.
Okay.
It would surprise me if it's 120 feet above sea level, because it was significantly lower than the active floor.
Right. And so with what Mr. Strab said, so I can wrap my head around. What's the triggering mechanism? If you start work in the new section, but you don't go below, we'll call it existing floor, not this rectangle that's significantly lower, what is the triggering mechanism? Any, are you saying it's the existing 120 below sea level that is existing? And Mr. Strab, you think there should be something more than that?
No, that's right. But they, they, the sump is a, the, the sump keeps the, the level at the, is excavated below 120. We know that. But it keeps the, it pumps it to like 120. The top of the pond in the sump is around 120. So it doesn't go lower than that because it doesn't have to go lower than that, because that keeps the pit dry. Of some, going to Steve Diamond's question, is almost all, if not entirely, pumping stormwater. Everything in the pit and everything surrounded goes to the sump, goes, no place else for it to go. And they have to pump out of that in order to keep operations. So right now, there's no significant potential for groundwater to be flowing to that sump, because the elevation of the pond in the sump is high. It's, it's up around 120, although the rock below that elevation is probably less than that, is, is less than that. So there, there, if they had to lower the sump, to lower the floor elevation to get to rock down below 120, that, that would be a problem, or not be a problem. That would be a circumstance that triggers this whole concern about de-watering. So if they operate, as they're explaining this evening, as they are now, at the higher elevations, bringing it down, and, and they don't have to lower the sump, then the circumstances requiring the precautions are put off, are delayed. They, they could be delayed. That's correct.
Just to be clear, the 120 was a number in Bill's report. I, I didn't make it up. I certainly not qualified to make it up.
I, I just, I was just looking at the site plans that Mike Wright's firm put together.
And, and that refers to existing floor?
I think everyone, as we discussed, that lowest floor would have advanced beyond that lowest floor. That is when we are going to be discussing.
If I'm looking at, if I'm looking at this correctly, though, the cross-section of B isn't a cross-section of the lowest point existing today.
That's correct.
Is a lower point than B. So you're below.
The, the cross, the cross-sections that Respect included in, in this material are to the south of the lowest points in the pit. The lowest points from their, from their site plan are about 120. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, we were utilizing the property as the, you know, what we were doing, our transect through, we just started throwing them up over on the north side where I'm part of the.
You're saying is right. A and B cross-sections are at higher elevations than the lowest point of the pit. And then you still have, again, that, that area where the water pools where it's pumped from, which is even lower than that.
And technically, you can still go lower than that. It exists.
Significantly lower than that. We haven't had the need to do that. Significantly lower than that. We haven't had the need to do that.
Okay. Where are you pumping all this water to?
Um, the water is being, uh, you didn't go on the site visit, um, at the, he have my drawings. Um, but it is.
Just they have this. In the CMA.
So if you heard about this in that upper area that was, this is where it's right now. Over and show you or?
I, I have it all set up, just like.
It's pumped to the surface and it creates it.
While they're looking at that, um, you were talking about the soundness of the, how solid the rocks are. Um, Dover's well is quite productive, quite a few gallons per minute. Would that not suggest that there's a great deal of porosity of the stone down there?
Uh, Dover well is, uh, is, uh, located in, in entirely different geologic regime. The, the granite that they're quarrying on the west, to the west of the Dover well uh, transitions to a very large sand and gravel deposit. And the Dover well is screened in the sand and gravel, not the bedrock. So it's, it's an over, what we call an overburdened well, and, and, and it pulls water out of the sand and gravel and it's replenished through that sand and gravel. So it's not a bedrock well like many people have for the homes.
Okay, but, uh, one other detail about the soundness of the rock. So it's not very often that we have seismic activity, but there are fault, fault lines in the area and there is going to be blasting in the area. So can you really be sure that any cracks won't get bigger?
Yeah. Uh, in terms of the blasting, Mike, Mike Wright can address that. My understanding is that the blasting is done on a very fine network so that the energy placed into the rock is just enough to get the rock to a shallow depth to, to break. And is, is, is not, uh, not enough energy put in through the blasting mechanisms to, to affect the, the regional bedrock. But Mike, Mike can talk about that better. Um, in terms of geologic issues and uh, 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 cracks that formed when the glaciers left and took off a load and all that kind of stuff. That, that's been, that is typically addressed through what's something called fracture trace analysis, which they've done some of to date. Uh, but, uh, it's, it's an unknown. People, it's hard to determine specifically, which is why um, when, and when you get to it, uh, you would probably do this with so-called pyzometers, which are holes in the rock to measure the water levels at, in real time.
I'm also talking about earthquakes. It doesn't happen here often, but it is part of our hazard mitigation plan. It can happen at some point.
Yeah, um, that's, that's a question. I, I, I'm not, uh, probably the best person to talk about earthquakes, but maybe Mike's firm knows a little more about earthquakes than I do.
Talk about earthquakes.
Not the best person, but I'm a qualified geologist. Uh, most of the earthquakes that happened in New Hampshire are at depth and we're talking miles below the surface and we feel the vibration up here. What's happening up top? We're not opening big fractures like you're talking about in California, where we're on a major fault line or anything like that. We don't have major fault lines here. We have smaller, um, you know, seismic areas, but most of these that occur in our area are from rebound and are not, you know, from the glaciers moving off. Even though that was significantly years ago, we're still having a rebound of the rock and you get small re, you know, or that maximum, um, on the seismic graph, but you know, nothing significant. And he is right, when we do blast, all our energy goes into throwing the rock forward. It's not throwing vibrations and, you know, anything else backwards. And we do monitor that when we're doing the blasting.
The, the Dover's monitoring wells, how close can you get to those at?
I don't have, uh, specific information on that, but the, from, when we were on the site walk, when you're, we, we were standing where you could see the Dover well, there were observation wells to the west towards the Brock's property. I don't know, I don't know, I, I, I can see there were some. I don't know the specific.
All right, we're getting confirmation here to, it would get it within about three-hundred and fifty.
And does the current, um, depth, uh, of that one-twenty trigger, uh, the seismic refraction analysis like Mr. Straub mentioned?
Yeah, what he's talking about is getting a reflectivity off the rock and it, it is a cheap.
But, but are you, are you required to do it early if you hit that one-twenty mark?
Oh, well, I think what, the, uh, what I'm talking about is the, uh, the, there's, there's sand and gravel or overburden of some depth, and then there's the rock surface. The rock surface here is very distinct. It's very, it's very clear. It's not, it's not a weathered rock surface. And, uh, seismic refraction profiling is, you set off a series of energy sources on the surface and it measures the reflectivity off the rock. And in, in a, in a, a setting like this, it's very accurate and can, can give you a profile of the bedrock itself along the line that you do the seismic on.
I guess my question is, you had mentioned some, uh, triggering activity that would require some analysis.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
Right. So what, what triggers that and at what depth to protect? You know.
In, in, in broad terms, their operation cannot affect the regional, could not affect the regional groundwater levels. In other words, they're not, they would not be pumping from elevation significantly below, uh, one-twenty. So if they, if they had, if they had to pump to allow excavation before below one-twenty, then that question is active.
Right, so whenever they want to do any, uh, removal period groundwater level, that's when the system would need to be.
Yes, and I, I would suggest that it be in place before that, but, and that's what I was asking.
Prior to entering, you know, coring operations, mining operations below groundwater level, this system would be.
Well, what's the trick?
Yeah, um. If you want, if you want, if you want to have it in place, when excavation goes below, say, one-twenty, and it should be developed between now and that time. I'm not, I'm not sure what that is.
Jamie, the state permit says ground, if groundwater de-watering occurs, then the plan needs to be submitted and approved. So. Right, that's so, if groundwater occurs, it triggers that. But we're saying, because we're approaching someone else's well, do we put those in place sooner before you hit groundwater? I think, if I understand correctly, that's what Mr. Straub's saying, is let's put those in place sooner before you hit groundwater, so we know what we're getting into before we get there.
Well.
Correct.
Instead of different way, that's what I was seeing, is that at the point at which you want to start removing material uh, at, at groundwater level, the system has to be in place. So you're obviously going to have to build it before you ever penetrate the depth.
Right, I think the point is, is, is that, is there a threshold for that? Is it one year before, one month before, one week before, or the day you go before?
Why would you necessarily have to set? Because that's, I think that's what Mr. Straub's leaning on, is you start doing, getting some information, some analytical information to look at before you penetrate that ground, as opposed to we dig in, water's present, now we got to start pumping, now we have to put the plan in place, because that seems how it's indicated to me right now. They put their buck in the ground and water shows up, you got to start pumping it, now it's triggered, as opposed to let's be proactive one year, six months, three months, we'll start monitoring, see what happens, because we know we're going to hit water soon.
The, the existing, the existing condition and the existing, uh, alteration of terrain permit, uh, is, is, is uh, not specific on that sequence. They didn't think about it, or they didn't address it in any rate. So there, there, there's no sequence there. Um, uh, it, it, when, it, it, when these guys go back to the AOT a second time, uh, perhaps that could get better, uh, better, uh, specified sequence wise. In terms of whether it's one year or two years or three years or five years or whatever.
But in your report, Bill, you, you say six, it says before, uh, groundwater de-watering is required. A, a monitoring reporting plan should be submitted and approved by the department. So doesn't that indicate that it has to be done before they go below the level? I mean, it seems to me it's already there.
Say whether, it doesn't say whether it's, uh, one week or five years, that, and typically.
It has to be, it has to be submitted and approved before they can go before that, right?
That's correct.
What's, what's the matter? If it's a week every year?
What if you hit groundwater at one-thirty?
It says if groundwater de-watering happens, you got to, you got to submit a, a plan to the state and it's got to be approved before it can go any further. So to me, that permit already says that. It already says, and whether they get, whether it gets approved, you know, a week before, a year before, they got to, it's got to be approved before they can move forward. So I don't know what the timeframe.
My understanding is they've already made the impact, and I, I could be wrong. It's just the way I'm, I'm hearing this is they hit groundwater, now they're going to put the plan in place. They've already made the impact on the, on the ground by.
Well, but they're, 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 they're accumulating stormwater, not, not, not groundwater. They're not, they're doing stormwater. They're not doing. If groundwater de-watering from excavation is required. Stormwater, that's different from stormwater.
I don't, where did stormwater come from? But I'm not talking about that. We're talking about ground, trigger.
That requires monitoring is if groundwater de-watering from excavation.
Yes.
So.
Which they're not doing now. You're not doing.
But if they hit groundwater at one-thirty, it comes out.
They stop, yeah. They stopped, they can't. They stopped, but the damage has been done. Isn't the idea that Mr. Straub is trying to put forward is that you should? I don't know. I'm not a geologist or a hydraulic.
The concern somehow, water the aquifer and well would starve, right? And so this, the, the city of Dover's well would not have sufficient pumping ability. Getting groundwater and reaching the depth of the well are two different issues.
And I don't understand. That's why I bring up the question. I, to me, it's like you cut the vein and then you, you let it bleed out until the permit comes back and then say we're going to stop the bleeding.
And at some point get to where you're at the water table. If you dig a foot below that, you're going to have a foot of water over the entire bottom of it. So you, you reach water just because it actually, you've got wells in that area, correct?
Right.
So you actually are monitoring water. You know you're.
And the other point, Jamie, is they say there's a, they say there's a, there's a barrier between the well and them. It's, what do you call it? Significant, uh, thing you're talking about, Jeff.
Oh, yeah.
An impervious, uh, hydraulic barrier between the two anyway.
And you can see it on the diagram.
And, and I, and I'm not trying to dispute anything. I, I think these were questions you read to me that I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so.
Put in protections that seem minor ahead of time instead of after the fact.
I mean, at, at this point, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, if they don't, if they didn't lower the level of the core where it is today, the only area that's below, as I understand what you're telling me, uh, the only area that is below is a small area for the sump where you're pumping stormwater out. The rest of the quarry right now is above the water table.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay. And you were proposing that you could remove some top materials above the water table. You know, to expand and, um, then you still would be above the water table.
Correct.
Is that correct?
You could do that on the existing area and in the expansion area, if those reserves exist in both places.
Now, at the point at which you go down below the water table and in which you have to start pumping from the water table in order to put the water out of the quarry, that's the point which under the state requirement, like Bill pointed out, you would have to have this plan in place. And I would say not just the plan, but you would also have to have the system installed.
Yes, but, but we don't have any objection to Bill's suggestion of starting and developing and submitting that plan prior to.
And that's what I was.
I, I agree.
Then we'll be ready.
I, and I agree with that recommendation in that respect, I agree with here that, no, we don't wait until you're actually, you know, uh, take that shovel full, uh, down to a hundred and nineteen and you're below the water table before you start doing.
That's what I was saying, and both of you said, no, wait. And because ground, you said one-twenty is arbitrary and it's, it's an approximation. It's not, there's no triggered number, correct?
It, it's groundwater monitoring. It's groundwater extraction.
They've got wells, they're mining the water level, they know what the water table is. You know whether you got water coming into the quarry or not.
Oh, that elevation's dry today.
Right.
And I'm certainly not opposed. I'm just trying to get a better understanding, get it all out there, because I think a lot of it's hypothetical. So in some sense.
So if you go below that level, if you want to go below that, if you get down to that level, which is where they're at, a lot of it is, they want to go below the level of the track or, you know, anywhere. And what I was saying is, not only will you have approved plans, but this, before you you go another foot deeper, you need to have the system.
He was, oh, that's exactly what I was saying. And you were saying, no, once you hit groundwater and you have to start de-watering, that's when you have to have a plan in place.
Well, but per the state you do.
But that's what I'm saying. I don't know. I feel like you're arguing.
Jamie, um, we can do more, but that's already in place. The state permit already says that.
And we can, but we can reiterate that in, in an approved.
And they have already said they're willing to do that. So I think that's something we can.
And I, I guess I was just looking for a number that we were trying to settle on so we could move forward, is really, I guess where I was kind of. I think it's pretty hard to put a number to it, because if you're not talking about hitting this ten years from now and if we want to throw out the whole climate change component, maybe we have drier years, maybe we have wetter years. That one-twenty now could be one-sixteen ten years from now or fifteen years from now. It could be very different.
I think that water in line is a good thing to stay with the same one the state has.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, the other suggestion from Bill's report, which again, we have no issue with, is an updated operations plan, which can address where we are and what data we do have available from the existing well.
Characterization at least of that boundary of the quarry, uh, true refraction analysis, I think is a inappropriate condition. So you've got things well characterized. Having taken care of the system is approved and installed prior to going below water. And you were saying?
Yeah, and the updated plan, if I remember correctly, that Bill referenced was a five-year, five-year refresh on that.
And who's the reporting go-to?
That's what happened in the past one, was that five-year interview submitted.
And then, yeah, CMA or whomever. Wow, review it.
We received them, but there wasn't any review done, because it was just information given.
Yeah, it says, uh, periodic updates suggested five years.
But why? When, it, it, when, when that information comes into the town, A, I would think you would need to come to the board, so the board can see. You made that a condition of your approval that in five years, they come in front of the board and you review it, so. Well, when you say it's provided to the town, where are the towns in that zone? Then why would that get provided to the planning board? Are you going to be rehearing the case? Do we need any information to make? No, I think it's appropriate that if, that if the board approves something, it will be periodic reports, the board would get that information.
I, I guess there's other things that have recertification. If Jeff is going to be here by time that.
What are you going to do with?
No, I, I, my, my. My concern more is someone who has the knowledge base to look at the report.
But it doesn't matter. There's still going to be a board.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I'd like the odds on that. I think, I mean, to me, it's more someone who would be appropriate, uh, lens to look through as opposed to the board. I don't.
Right.
The report's going to mean almost nothing to me, really.
Right, you should go to like CMA and they would provide a, a feedback review to the board.
Uh, the only reason we come to the board, so we can refer it to, to the CMA, unless we skip that.
Planning office to do that automatically.
Yeah, it'd be a condition of your, whether you wanted to review, you could do that. But if it's not one of your conditions, when the information comes in, there's no application to the board, then the board's really has no decision at that time. That's.
There's not, I guess what John's trying to say is, we can look at the information, no matter what we see or beside, we can't really do much. We can't rescind their permits. We can't change anything. We, we're just looking at it.
Well, that's not.
Well, I know, there's one avenue.
But we would want to know if it's, you know, if the approved project is performing in accordance with what our expectations were. You know, if all of a sudden, you know, uh, we get the data in and but it says that the water table in Dover just dropped a hundred. Maybe we ought to take another look at this?
And I think it would be appropriate then to have it.
CM, you know. I think it would have to be some kind of condition on your approval to reference that when that report's done, if it shows something negative that they have to come back to, you know, it's the, the approval. I'm not sure how you would have to word that. It's kind of, might wanna talk to an attorney and make sure we get it worded right.
Well, before we word it though, I mean, whose purview is this really? Is this the state's or ours? I mean, state's looking at this too. It seems to me they have the authority and the, they're getting regular reports, I would imagine. So, I mean, it seems like everything, something's gone, gone down a hundred feet in five years. State should know a year, two or three before that.
I think Mr. Strub indicated that the AOT doesn't get that kind of information, right?
There's, there are five-year updates that are due by statute to the alteration of terrain. They're routinely provided as a snapshot of where the excavation stands. That moment is where it was in the prior five-year period versus what it's approved to, to in terms of final contours and the reclamation standards. The, we, we wouldn't have any issue with the condition that says the report indicates some anomaly, town can engage peer review, whoever it is at the time, uh, to, uh, take a look at things and advise the town. Uh, I mean, I, I think it would be more typical that it comes at the staff level than back to the planning board and staff performs that review function and then either elevates the issue to the planning board or to a peer reviewer. Um, or even issue some sort of a, uh, you know, a notice to the landowner that there's some concern relating to a permitted activity. But I, I, I don't, I don't know how you could predict that now or create that mechanism now.
Does the frequency change once you, the frequency of reporting change once you go below groundwater?
For the state, no.
So it's still just five-year updates.
That's correct.
At that point.
That's correct because of course you're following the conditions of the approval that you were issued.
What, what happens? Then if, if this, um, plan that would be in place is gonna be collecting data. Right?
Yes.
So you will be the holder of that data.
Well.
And that doesn't get provided.
To the state, correct. If, if, if town wants it on that derivative, we would supply it.
That's why I was asking about the threshold is, does that, does that mean once you, because I would almost think once you cross below groundwater, there would be a more frequent.
Right. Increase in frequency with.
Most likely come out of, if we develop a monitoring plan for going into the groundwater, that would probably be part of the monitoring plan. No, we're gonna be dealing with this much water. We're gonna need to report on it this much.
Uh, would the monitoring plan be provided to the town when that's event is triggered ten, fifteen years down the road, whatever it may be?
Yeah, I think that was the suggestion.
Think that makes sense along, right? Um, Carol, do you have any input?
I have not been able to catch all of the discussion because the audio keeps cutting out. But I do think that, that, that is a good idea. I've worked with some towns that use the AOT five-year for their information. And then the planning board only gets involved again, uh, if they determine that there's some kind of an issue that would call for planning board action. Otherwise, I don't know who the gentleman's name, who suggested that. I, I agree that it makes sense to have that report go to staff. Again, if there's no action needed by the planning board, no formal action, there's no be involved in that monitoring unless of course there is a problem and it needs to come back before you for some additional approval.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, this is Bill Strab again. I think, uh, on that, our, our, our recommendation about the operating plan, that, that can be tied into the AOT reporting. That's just fine. But it also included, uh, a narrative that, uh, described anticipated timeframes from where you are to where you're gonna be pumping groundwater. We'd, we'd been talking about that. So every, every five years, they would assess how soon they would be pumping groundwater uh, or not. And then also it's a fairly minor point, but, um, the, uh, we suggest that expanded safety provisions be incorporated regarding, you know, chance encounters of the quarry wall. People have unauthorized access to the site. Uh, it's fenced, yes, but no, people don't often stop at fences, kids and so forth. But we wanna make sure that that's addressed and that, that's a fairly minor point. Um, I think, um, I think it's, the, the planning board would like most of its environmental concerns to be reflected in AOT or DES permits. Um, I think we've, we've got a ten, ten or twelve-year-old permit here that's gonna be reviewed when they go to AOT expansion uh, for this, this piece of it. Uh, I think we'd, we'd want, we'd want DES to take a, uh, an updated look at this whole thing. Um, and, and think about it, uh, i- i- in the level of depth that we're talking about it now. They may not have done that, uh, fifteen years ago. Uh, so we, we want DES to, to be proactive and, and thinking about how they write the permits on this. I don't know how, how that happens except for, uh, any, any, as a, a reflection of any condition you might put on this.
Do we?
Mr. Chairman, I, I noticed we have a representative from, uh, from Dover out here. Maybe this would be appropriate time for some public comment?
Uh, yeah, so I was gonna, as soon as the board's done, I was gonna do that. Thank you for pointing that out. Um, do we have any control over what DES does in that regard? I think Mr. Strub is voting to.
Not really.
Put something, pardon me?
Do they even seek our, or look at our conditional?
Not from DES. We have a memorandum and understanding with DOT, but not.
A parent-child relationship.
You know, that technically.
Does the board have more questions before we try to get, um, at this time, I'm gonna open public comment. I wanna start with you, uh, Elizabeth. Let you get your say in first.
Yeah, sure. It's actually, um, Dr. Chen Young with the City of Dover.
All right.
Yeah, no, that's all right. Um, I'm the environmental project manager for the City of Dover. And, uh, we've been working with my right and that, their team for, I guess, a year and a half now. Um, and I think the biggest piece is, uh, that Bill Strab has sort of alluded to is that there were permits that were issued fifteen years ago. And, um, and it is a strange situation where AOT does not typically, um, you know, permit groundwater. It's kind of an odd, odd way that this is set up. So it's kind of weird how things are being triggered. Um, so while there are, are existing permits, we are concerned now as we're looking at it that there's some information that's ki- kind of missing, um, not having the full profile of the rock, not, you know, understanding whether there's any high-yield, um, uh, cracks in the, in the, in the rocks. Um, we had some questions about, uh, monitoring water quality and, um, and pieces like that, that probably should have been addressed as the first part of the permitting. But for whatever reason, fifteen years ago, and because it's such an odd situation, it really didn't get incorporated. But you know, now as we're looking at it, um, we really wanna take a good, hard look at this. You know, we're not, Dover's not opposed to the project. Um, but we obviously, this, uh, this aquifer can provide more than fifty percent, sixty percent of the, uh, water for the city. And so it's one that we cannot lose, right? So, um, so, you know, uh, I think we in general kind of agree with what, um, CMA has put together, but we'd really like to see uh, some, I guess, um, progress or better understanding of both water quality and, uh, sort of assurances that the bedrock's gonna hold up and there aren't kind of de-watering of the aquifer. Um, now certainly before we get into a situation where it's in the groundwater. And as we talked about tonight, the, the way that it's written currently in the AOT is sort of odd and vague and is it once the damage is done? Is it not? So we really wanna take this opportunity to shore up that language, make sure that we understand, um, what's happening, how it's gonna potentially impact the aquifer and, uh, make sure that that doesn't happen so that it works for all of us. Um, a couple of other comments. Unfortunately, our, uh, Emery and Garrett, who are our, um, groundwater consultants and are, you know, much more intelligent than I am when, when it comes to how groundwater and geology work, um, have not had the opportunity yet to review what CMA put together. Um, they've got a long working relationship with CMA and, and, you know, in general, I think a lot of the CMA comments are probably the same as theirs. But we didn't receive those comments until, um, I think it was Thursday afternoon, uh, right before the holiday. So they, they haven't had a chance to go through and sort of make any comments on that. We did, um, email, I think, a list of five or six comments back in Oct- or in November that I just haven't seen any response to. And it just kind of talked about, uh, if a high-yield bedrock fracture is intercepted, um, you know, what's the, what's the plan, um, to ensure that that, that the aquifer wouldn't be de-watered? And then just talking about, you know, groundwater monitoring, um, water monitoring and the pumping that they are discharging um, to the infiltration area. We just would want some, uh, water quality monitoring there to ensure that there's no, you know, nothing that's getting into our aquifer, um, causing any issues. Um, and we just haven't seen any of that. I guess, uh, the last is what data sets will be collected to help monitor the water quality, uh, and of the discharge from the quarry, quarry, um, particularly in relationship to the blasting materials. So those are just some things that we'd like to see. You know, we're hoping to see just to make sure that we're all on the same page and protecting the aquifer and working well together. I, uh, sent them to Barbara.
How long ago was that?
It was in November. Now, these are the same comments that John Brooks has had for the entire time that we've been talking to, um, to Brooks.
Well, this is the, the first time since then that it would have been open for public comment.
Okay. Yep, that's fine.
And, and your folks are in a matter slash member of the public with respect. So, um, did, did we receive that?
Yeah, I know.
She said, she doesn't.
She said you would have got it a couple of months ago when you did all the other stuff.
And I think you might pack it as well.
Anything that came in was submitted was.
Okay.
I mean, I ask a question though, while you're up there.
Yeah.
Have you had any conversations with alteration of terrain about these questions?
Uh, you know what? I did. I talked to them a while ago, um, and just giving them the heads up that it was coming up. Uh, DES has invested substantially in wa- in Dover's water program. So I wanted to make sure that they had, um, that when, once AOT saw it, so I, I reached out to Ridge Mock and let him know that, you know, once it comes to make sure that they reach out to their water department, um, and make sure they're talking. But, you know, like everyone said, this is a strange situation. The water uh, branch of DES does not typically get involved in the AOT permit. So, you know, it's a little bit of uncharted territory, but I think everybody in the room, including all of the Bronx people, agree that, that we want the same outcome. So there's no question about, you know, what is, what makes sense, what's the best.
Follow up on that question.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, DES knows there's an issue when they're talking to each other now to try to make sure that the water in the alteration of terrain, people hope know what's going on with each other. I'm assuming opening that conversation up, they're probably talking, right?
Yeah, it was, uh, probably last spring that I, I reached out to them, but I, you know, I did put that on their radar.
When you talk about water quality, uh, Ken, I just wanna be clear. I understand pumping from the sump to de-water the quarry, making sure that you're not having infiltration of, of, you know, but you see, that seemed to be separate from your issue of water quality. What, what water are you talking about monitoring for water quality?
Uh, well, I'm talking about the, yeah, the discharge from the sump. Um, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention there, there's, there's been this theme that AOT, the AOT alteration of terrain bureau does not get involved in groundwater protection. It's an odd thing for them. That they're often involved in groundwater protection and they often confer with their own groundwater protection bureau. Ridge Mock and Brandon Kernan work together regularly and have done significant work together on the issue of excavation air, this alteration of terrain pumping, uh, blasting operations and activities in those areas. Um, coming up with monitoring plans for exactly the kind of, uh, you know, concerns relating to water quality that we're talking about. Not necessarily a municipal well in proximity to an excavation area. I think that might be the unique circumstance, but certainly not at all you pay the alteration of terrain bureau to be concerned.
I, I mean, we've seen that, especially in development of areas and alteration of terrain adjacent.
Correct.
That happens frankly all the time.
Correct.
Town owns a piece of property they were looking at for excavating purposes. They were monitoring the water level and stuff because of wells of the Mobile Ombak, which was all part of that AOT. So that's why I was kind of confused about them not dealing with it and not working with each other because that's contrary to the issue that we're dealing with on the other side of town.
I've been involved in some of those conversations. It is. Odds and calls of the.
Yeah, but they're still talking to each other. It's not.
It's.
Uh, we have a letter from Miss Young in December twenty, twenty twenty, um, which seems to identify. Uh, the board would have had this from back in December, but Barbara. She'll send it to all of you, make sure the applicant has it. And Miss Young, this isn't the most updated comments that you're referring to. I will send it to you and if you have additional questions. This is, has twelve integrated comments and a couple of ones that you mentioned.
Um, and it's, I got a couple of questions. What, uh, ha- in the last fifteen years, has there been an issue with that in your five-year reporting that's come forward, that's been addressed by the state that you've had to look at? And is it a, a lack of re- of, of their involvement or just that it's been a very clean operation?
The reporting that they get is a snapshot of where you stand versus what the permitted extent of excavation and depth of excavation is. Um, I, I'm certainly not aware of any comment on the submissions for this, uh, property other than thank you received.
Yeah. And so, and, and, you know, circling around some of the other comments about how they interact with water quality, feels as though this very limited, uh, conversation between that five-year report and any report back on water quality.
Well, I think it has direct relationship to what you were pointing out earlier, which is we haven't encountered groundwater and there isn't a need to be too concerned about.
So you haven't had a bedrock water level monitoring and reporting plan in place?
We did a bedrock monitoring plan back in two thousand and nine where we put in a couple of wells, checked the bedrock quality, um, checked the water level. Uh, we submitted that. Brendan Kernan of the Waters did review it and commented with us at the same, at that time. Why don't we wait when we go below the water table? The best time to figure out what's going on at this site.
And then my other part was that, um, for me personally, and I can't, uh, won't, won't speak for it. Things that you're interested in seeing when we talk about water quality, that's very generic for me. Um, and, and so like, Mr. Strub, you put in some bulleted items that we can present to them that we'd like to see. And that's understandable. They can say, no, we can vote on things like that. But to say, we wanna make sure we protect our water quality, I don't know how to do that. So it needs to be a more precise, uh, you know, for me anyways, and I, and I, I imagine others as well. I'm interested in protecting water quality and, you know, the water. Um, but I don't know how to do that in this circumstance without some suggestion, specific suggestion that we can pose to them we can vote on and then say, no, we don't wanna do that. Yes, we do. We vote on it's approved type of thing.
But, but, but what my suggestion was, uh, Jim, on that was you have the ability to require a high geologic study in your, in your regs under four thirteen five. And I think you could use that as a condition. And I've bulleted a number of conditions under that recommendation. And I talk about referencing in conjunction with DES's permit renewals and amendments requiring those things. That might be the link between you and, and DES. Um, you shouldn't have to spend the effort and time and money necessarily, uh, uh, reviewing every little detail of those plans. That's a big deal. Um, we could do that. I don't know that you wanna pay for that, but I think you wanna assign as much of this to DES you possibly can. Um, and, and, but you, you need to be fairly satisfied that, 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 uh, they, they're doing the things that you've determined to be important. One of the things under the third bullet item there under A1, we talked about an updated water quality monitoring plan of sump flows to the groundwater. We talked about an updated water quality monitoring plan of sump flows to the groundwater discharge area. There's been periodic reports on that, but that ought to be a, an annual or a biannual thing where. You're gonna, you're gonna specify the sampling locations and the sampling, uh, and the analytical, uh, things that you're looking for. And so they can look and so there has a record that, the, the record shows that all the water that's pumped up there is clean. Or if there's ever an issue where it's not clean, you know it. And, uh, and that's been, that's been not a regular thing. And that's one of our recommendations, that be a more of a, a regular, uh, thing.
To make it clear though, you would almost have to tell us. What we're looking for, because you're the third party reviewer that understands this, not this board. For the board to put a condition that you want a sample done every six months or something like that, and it's got a certain quality. That's almost something that you would almost have to put together for this board to say, yeah, that's what it is. We want to make sure that it works. Because we're not expertise experts on this, so we don't know what we're supposed to be asking for.
Yeah, we, we, we could do that, but, but, uh, it also should be reflected in the DES permits and we'd be happy to do it either way. We can comment on the DES permits on your behalf. Or we could, uh, put certain outline specifications together at the head end of it, either way.
I, I would also offer Dover, uh, because we do have such a vested interest in this and we do have Emery and Garrett who work regularly with CMA. You know, I, I don't know how this would work, but Dover's willing to assist with any of that as needed.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, it's a, for us to put a condition in that there's got to be a. A certain clause included in the, uh, uh, DES groundwater permit.
Can't do that, no.
We can't do that. I mean, we can't tell these guys, you have to tell DES something, or they can't get the permission, that.
No, this, I think the suggest, I don't know if the suggestion is that a water quality sample is sent to DES with a five year permitting? Or?
Yeah. So that, I mean, that just wouldn't work.
I, I think.
I'm sorry.
If I, if I hear what you're saying though, is saying we can require monitoring. Now, we can feed that to the nation's DES. And say, we think you ought to include this in the permit, whether they do or not, doesn't matter. But we could specify that there be this monitoring.
Yes. So if I could. I think we've all been discussing exactly what is in the recommendation section of the CMA report. And our opening suggestion was that the, an approval be conditioned upon those recommendations. Um, the DES is going to explore the same issues when it considers the application we're about to file with them. And the only reason we haven't done it already is we didn't want to be out of sequence with what we filed with the town. We wanted it to be lined up properly so that. From one approval, second follows suit. We don't. Both the items we've talked about tonight, the hydrogeologic study and the operations plan with updates to the operations plan. Are all on page five and six of the CMA report. We have no issue with those recommendations. They're, they're based on sound science. Um, and somebody else does, and would like the idea of, uh, uh, not a date certain in this case, but an elevation certain of when that. Of when that plan needs to take shape, because we're going to know at that point that we're approaching an intersection of groundwater.
Uh, on, on the groundwater levels, that's absolutely true, but the, uh, uh, the water quality monitoring plan, that should be, that should be happening anytime. I would suggest, uh, very often we, you can, you can, uh, uh, place it on the applicant. To come up with this plan and they can, they can put, uh, flesh on these bones here. And, uh, uh, and, 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 and propose, uh, uh, more specificity on each of these items. And that can be reviewed by the board and we can comment on that in, in your review. That might be appropriate way to do it is to require that they, they, as, as part of this, uh, action. They actually, uh, flesh out those items in a, in a subsequent submittal to you as part of the condition.
Uh, are, are there sufficient monitoring wells to execute what you're suggesting here about water qual- quality monitoring?
Uh, water quality monitoring is interesting thing. If you, if you, if you measure the sump water as it's pumped into the infiltration area. That's fine. If there was actually a, 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 a problem, which would be terrible. Uh, with, with the quality of what's being infiltrated, then you have to have monitoring wells associated with that. We're talking about monitoring the water quality going into that sump area. And if that's, if that's fine, then you're, everything should be fine.
That, that's not an assumption though, that there is no seepage, there's no, uh, water travel from inside the quarry. Other than due to pump.
And that, and then that's, that's a fact. Everybody, yes, because it's the low point, the only way out of there is to be pumped.
Which I'm assuming all of this falls under like a stormwater pollution prevention plan?
Uh, not, not specifically, but.
It's the alteration of terrain permit.
I, I mean, I just know I deal with SWIPs all the time and when you. The reporting requirements are far more than five years on those, so.
That's.
Aren't discharging offsite.
What's that?
We aren't discharging offsite.
Not discharging offsite either.
Yeah, but this is handled under their AOT. But it doesn't sound like it's being handled. They're pumping to that discharge area, but it's not being monitored. We're, yeah, but that's part of what we can. But you just said that it's being handled, but it's not.
We, we haven't talked today about the other permit. There's AOT permit and then there's the, uh, uh, what the hell they call it back in the early two thousands, the, um.
Waste water discharge.
Waste water discharge permit from, and, uh, and that has conditions that, that says you can't pump anything into that discharge area. That has any contaminant above the groundwater standards, drinking water standards of New Hampshire. That's in that permit. And I presume that that permit's going to be reviewed as well. I, but we don't know that. But that.
How are we sampling? How are they sampling for? How, is there a sampling plan for that?
That, that's the thing.
That's why I'm talking about SWIPs, because you have a sampling plan that you go off.
Right. So I can share this much. The sump pump and the discharge area are both part of the area regulated existing permit. And the existing alteration of terrain permit and are not within the five acres of the expansion area. And so.
How do you know the water quality of the water that you're putting in, out of some into the?
I don't know.
We have sampled it in April this year and we've sampled it previously.
And how do you sample that? Do you have test wells, the surface?
Oh, we have, we have grab samples.
You, you take a sample and send it to the lab. But i- is there a particular requirement to do it with the frequency? Not that I'm aware of that. We did it in coordination with.
And are there any test mon- monitoring wells within?
Within the area. I don't know.
We have one well by the pump house. Uh, if you're, when you're going down and we were looking over into that lower area, immediately to your left, there was a little pump house. It was, there's a well right there. If that's inside your infiltration area, I don't. Standing infiltration area.
Grab samples, that's, that's just a snapshot in time. Okay? And, uh, but if you have a monitoring well within the infiltration area. You're pumping continuously out in the infiltration area. Uh, if, if something happens in between the time that you're taking grab samples. And it's infiltrating, uh, infiltration, then that should be picked up and monitored.
But it's all, Jeff, there are always going to be grab samples because you never continuous monitor with any grab sample style method. It's not.
I understand that.
But you could, it would facilitate taking regular samples.
Yeah, it's a, the sampling frequency normally established for this kind of thing, which. I don't know, depending on the contamination site or the, the, the site that you're monitoring for potential contaminants, it's, it's. Annual, semi-annual, might be quarterly, no, no more frequently than that.
Right. It would, yeah, most you would ever see.
I mean, I think, I think there's a.
Continuous monitoring. That would prohibitively expensive, but. Yeah, but it would facilitate taking regular, see, a, a regular.
So.
And see in between pumping whether you're accumulating.
What, what you've got now is, is stormwater going into a, a hole that's being pumped to another area. I don't know where the concern for contamination occurs. Um, you certain, if you had an event of some kind, right? If a high, if a line broke or a, a gas tank ruptured or you. You know, you had some particular occurrence, then sure, you might, uh, want to take some sampling to know whether or not you've had an impact. But other than that, just having the water run down the hill into the hole. That happens with or without an excavation area.
I understand. That one, one thing I think of there were questions about. Nitrics coming from the blasting.
Mm-hmm.
Those things. That those could get washed into yourself.
Well, the, the other thing here is that, uh, the, the discharge area, uh, I'm not sure it's been. Specifically characterized, but everyone's assumption that that's on the other side of the rock wall and. Infiltrating into the sand and gravel aquifer of the Campbell well. Oh, that hasn't been documented. That's everyone's presumption that that's, you're pumping out of the hole into the sand and gravel that heads towards that Campbell well. Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But typically, if, if you were to put the rock all back in, there was a big mound there. Stormwater would have been hitting this rock and heading off and going right to where we put this. So the, the state would tell us that we have to put the stormwater back to where it should be going.
Yeah. And I think that's reasonable to say. It's just, again, with a construction site, there may be contamination, I guess. So some monitoring, even at a five year frequency, I think is a soil sample, a water sample at a five year frequency is not absurd, I guess. It's kind of.
And I agree with that. I, my only comment to it is natural runoff is different than manmade runoff being some, summed up. And then back to its original divert contoured path.
You are conducting operate, you are doing, you've got equipment, you've got blasting. This, this really mean, having an impact, we're not implying, but, you know, what do we do to, uh, allay anybody's concerns around the site? I can tell you. They feel that highly controversial from a technical standpoint. Uh, that, you know, public concern is something that you've got to pay attention to, else we get overwhelmed.
I'm going to take a minute and just see if there's any other public comments, uh, that has been waiting patiently. If there's anyone out there that wanted to add.
Participating urgently, you'd like to make a comment, you can use Teams feature and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you might have to press star six to unmute yourself, speak up when you're recognized by the chair.
Uh, Gretchen, you have anything to add before I close public comment?
No, I don't. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is my close public comment. Um, I need a clear understanding of our next step path book. We're looking to, uh.
I, I think we, we have to draft up, I mean, if we want to move forward with an approval. We're going to have to draft up the notice of decision. We're going to have to have a discussion such that. Maybe even pass by the lawyer to make sure the condition is set and set.
The one bill proposed about, wow, having Brox put together that thing and then reviewing it to say these meet what those draftings were. We could get those guys to work together, come up with something, we can send it to the town's attorney. So you could have it at your next meeting to go over. That's what, that's the direction you need.
Yeah, I, I understand you folks want to move forward. At the same time, it's rather complicated. So we, we need to ensure that we do it right. So with our experts.
Well, we got both parties here. How long would it take you guys to put that together, you think?
This is what a proposed list of conditions.
Yeah, that bill could kind of review just to make sure that it's in line with what's been discussed today.
We could get it to them by the end of the week and be ready for meeting on the eighteenth.
Bill, how long will it take for you to do your review? Want it to?
Not long. If, 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 if they, if the, if the, uh, if the. If their proposal is substantial, uh, it shouldn't take more than a couple of days.
So that would give us a week to send it out to the attorney before our next meeting, um, meeting if the.
Yeah, it, it's.
Try to make that work for the eighteen?
I, I think so. And I'm assuming that includes the items in conversation like, like, uh, surface water, groundwater monitoring plan and things of that nature.
Stopping the plant.
Yeah, right. And I'll, I'll run down them kind of real quick if we can, if you see something. Uh, site safety was one that was brought up, um, the hydrological study, um, and, and a frequency on that is, is.
That's when they get below the water.
Right. And but that's what we're saying, a trigger.
Well, we're going to make sure the language, I, I mean, I think we need to be clear that we not only. We would want whatever system and. We're doing monitoring in place prior to reaching.
One twenty or some.
The water.
Yeah. At that time. And, and like Andy had said, you know, in fifteen years, if you determine the water level's one ten. And you're at one twenty, you go ten more feet. I mean, that's how we're talking, but just, so we're talking about that, um, bedrock water level monitoring, um. Some sort of, and I think a five year water testing type, uh, groundwater.
More frequent than that.
Um, and Mr. Strub, you can give input on that when you guys get together, but I mean, just to move it forward, if we all know where we are, we can get this done sooner rather than later as opposed to. Right. We're, we're talking in some vaguities and so some say two, six months, some say five years. I don't want to come back again next time and say. Right. You can come back and say, oh, you said three years, we wanted six months. It wastes another meeting when we can get you guys going forward. Um, and, and so that's what, some of these are vague to me and not specific. And that's why I was looking for more specificity. As far as what everybody wants, and that included what Gretchen was hoping to get out of it as well. Um.
Well, I think that we also need to beat them, whatever. Gretchen's comments were so that they're aware of their particular issues. But it sounds like they're. They're rooted in this idea of monitoring. Just like the water. For after, you drive us today, a few concerns. You're talking about water quality. I think the other one is they don't want to lower the water table obviously. She's a whatever monitoring.
And within reason. Yeah.
I think they'll talk about a long whip that DES stuff kind of ties it together so that.
Okay, include the stainless DMPs for blasting relative impacts on water quality. And these are all things that you had said previously that you folks agree with. Evaluation of any. Local use. To other wells, other, other wells, dating the operating plan. The other thing that we talked about, that I think we would see is. That we talked about getting a refraction, uh, profile of that, uh, that area.
Prior to going.
That's before they go below the.
Prior to going below, correct. I just wanted to make sure.
I think that ought to be done as soon as possible, but, you know, that would be a condition approval that they have to do it, but certainly before they go below the water.
Um, I know guys are talking as a board, come up with that timeline now to make it clear for them.
Yeah, right. I can get it addressed. Yeah.
That's why.
Um, I don't understand.
When do you want it done? I guess.
When do we? Characterization. Prior to.
I mean, the state says it's done before they go below, you know.
Well, that's not a state requiring.
No, that's not. No. So I guess.
This is something we technical input.
Yeah, right. I don't think we're.
I just, I just don't want you to do that.
Qualified to make that.
On first of time versus, you want to get that done before you go below the groundwater level.
Is that what you agree with, Mr.?
When that happens, we don't know. So I don't know why I would specify a time specific, you know what I mean?
But that's why I, I think we should ask Mr. Strub instead of us coming up with an idea. I mean, your opinion on when they should do it is good, but a professional's opinion on when it is necessary is probably more important.
I think whatever the applicant wants is.
My only thought about doing it sooner rather than later is that prior. Any materials is, you've got a good characterization. You'll know whether you're disturbing anything that you didn't know.
Mr. Strub?
Uh, I, I, from a practical perspective, uh, doing a seismic refraction sooner is a, an obvious choice. It's not expensive. It would give them information they might want to have too, about what the resource is and so forth.
When would be a proper time, I guess is what we're asking.
Uh, I. That, that could be done in the next two or three years easily. And that, that is still way in advance of their, they're needing it, which is likely, uh, five or eight or 10 years out. Um, but I think that should be done the first thing, uh, and it's, it's inexpensive. It's, it, it doesn't cost much. It provides a tremendous amount of information. Uh, that moves towards.
that moves towards getting this done. It's also, it's also information they can, they can use.
How long does this take? Two days, three days, two weeks?
Probably, the actual field work takes several days, but the interpretation takes a little bit. It can be done, and it depends who they engage to do it. It can be done in several weeks. Less important than timeframe is though, I don't understand the information that it presents. Does it present information that's going to save a possible catastrophe in the water table, or is it just good information about the rock that's in the ground? If it's just good information about the rocks in the ground, I prefer to give them more at their leisure as, before they hit a critical point as opposed to an arbitrary thing they should do just because it's a good idea to know what kind of dirt they have there.
And to support that point, Jamie, I mean, who's that data gonna be, who's that data gonna be presented to and approved by? It's not us. The state's gonna be the approver down the road, and they, they need to approve before they go above the water level. That's why I'm not.
But the state's not the approver. The state doesn't want that information. This is just additional information we're talking about.
And what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with it?
Give it to CMA to look and see.
So two years down the road when it's, when it's available.
Once you've given your approval, they don't go back to try to do it.
Right. Well, other than that, five-year report back, that's why I'm.
They don't come back in front of you and say, the site review is rescinded, so.
I'm saying that at a, at a five-year window, like we, with the other things, they would give the report to the town, to staff. Staff would do their, what they can to look at it instead. If there's an issue, we file it.
Yeah, because we're not experts and going have these guys as experts because you're not making it a condition that they got to meet a certain standard.
I mean, that's just data for them to use in preparing their plan.
Right. Yeah.
That's, I guess I'm trying to make.
Yeah, but I don't want to ask for information, you know, asking for information, what I got to do anything with is not, to me, it's a waste of money. What are you gonna do with it?
So whether if there's a two-foot fissure in the middle of this bedrock wall, nobody knows.
And that's going to be information that's going to, environment, their plan they're gonna submit to the state, but it's not going to influence our approval, right? It's two years down the road.
But you'd say like if there's a two-foot fissure in the middle of this thing, what does it mean for the environment, for this project, for anything?
It'll, it'll, it'll influence what they, the day, the plan they put together to submit to the state. But it won't, it won't influence everything we do. So why are we, I don't know why we're getting the middle of this, you know what I mean? We, we are doing nothing with the data. Why are we asking for the data? If our, if it isn't influenced one way or the other, I agree, don't make work. Yeah. Don't worry about it.
And I feel the same way. I just, and that's why I always go back to many of these situations, there's really no mon, it's all self-monitored. So if they do, they do it, they know what they've got for the information, but are they doing it with that information?
State's, state's looking at the data, and they're gonna, they're gonna prove it. You know, this, what they're asking for, remember, is going to delay going below the groundwater level. This is going to delay it for years, they said. So I'm persuaded by the statement that this addition will keep them from going deeper for another year or two.
10 years maybe.
Yeah. So I mean, to me, it's a good thing. Before it goes, they go below, you know, groundwater level, clearly some things to be put in place. They're willing to put them in place. I think we have conditions that say start to prepare that plan, submit it to the state for their approval. I think that's the right way to go. It's the cleanest, and it makes it easier on us if we don't get involved in things we know nothing about. It won't influence our decision one way or the other.
I, I, I agree with you. And again, I don't, if, we have them do something, they give it to the staff, we file it, it doesn't go to the state, nothing gets done with it, we're just making work. So in light of that, water samples, should it be written?
So that's not going to be included in the conditions anymore, John? Is that the decision you're making? I just want to make sure when I get this information, I'm asking for what you guys are asking for.
I know, but we're talking about.
No, so it was brought up about having that study done. It sounds like you guys decided not to have that.
No, no. What I'm saying, John, is I think as a condition of our approval for this expansion, we should tell them to stop putting that plan together. I would not give them specific timelines on that because they need to get it done before they can go deeper. So we don't know.
And the seismic thing was what the discussion was.
Right.
Are you going to require that to be correctioned?
I think, I would say they, I think that's a good thing for them to do as part of their plan. Once again, when they submit that plan to the state, is going to be five years, 10 years, whatever it's gonna be, they got to get it done before then.
So that's what I think we're saying, is the state plan doesn't require the seismic refraction analysis. It doesn't require, so it's, it would just be information for them to have, and they may make a different choice.
Yes, it influences their decision down the road.
One of the requirements of the condition of approval. I guess that's what.
Yeah, I do, but I don't want a timeframe.
So it will be, okay. That was what wasn't clear.
Then jumping to the water quality, again, if, who's going to get that report on water quality if you, if we're talking about the sump water? Should that be sent to the butter? I mean, that's the only person that's going to make any good use of that information.
Typically, something like that goes to the state groundwater division as well as, in this case, the butter since they're concerned about their water.
Right, because I mean.
Outside of regular reporting, do you think that if but if you think that you ended up with taking water samples and then doing analysis, and it's full of diesel fuel, and we're just gonna sit on that and file it in the drawer if we tell people nobody cares?
I think they clean it up as a responsible party, but no, would they report it to the neighbors?
Are you gonna, so you don't think as the town, if we get this information, we're not going to tell the state?
I don't think you have anybody who knows how to fully interpret that information. Or really is going to look at it hard enough to like determine what are the MDT, MDT or MTD, MBTE levels? Sorry, it's been a while since I've looked at all these things here that are tied to the water level. And do you understand like the threshold at it? I don't think, most people I don't think know that.
I think they have.
Are you gonna look at PFAS in the water then, and you want to start going down that rabbit hole?
But I also think, you know, they, they, they don't want, they don't want these things to happen either, so they're gonna.
Because the cleanup cost to them is astronomical.
Yeah, so I mean.
Into like requesting, can we leave a nice perch for a swim hole two generations from now?
You know, the only reason we're talking about this is because many people didn't want bad things to happen, didn't want to see things inadvertently, unintentionally, unexpectedly. That's why you see it. And when you get those results, you do something. But not everybody does. So who do they go to?
I mean, honestly, from a legal end, the moment they detect it, they have a legal obligation because it's exploratory and it's the other word for it, not compulsory, but they have.
They have legal reporting required.
But, but in the exploration of any legal findings, when you go in and look for it, they have to present and provide any, any documented evidence and any legally documented sampling requirements that may have been conditioned. And all of that is what's going to drive the fact that if somebody is accountable from a legal end moving forward. And then that's where they be, would, would be held liable and response, the responsible party.
Potentially responsible.
So what do you say? No reporting? We require that they do it so they have it for their own information. It's required. But we don't require reports. Just on file with the town. So if anybody wants to come look at it, they know it's on file with the town. Well, I think. So if, if the butter wants to come look at the report, it's on file with the town. If Ms. Young wanted to come. It's on. Pull that, there's a record of it.
Well, what Andy's saying, if you, if you're, as a company, if you get readings that indicate a problem, required to report them. That's a legal requirement.
And you're gonna do something about it, is really what's gonna. And I'm not making any assertions, but many a company didn't report things, go bankrupt, walk away. I mean, and leave the cleanup for somebody else. I mean, we've got, you know, super fun sites all over the state. So I'm not saying that this is a situation, but that's why you put.
We have one in our town.
Right. That's why you put reporting in. And so I think, Adam, we just have it go to the town. It's there for review if anybody wants to come look at it.
And when things like that happen, you know, there's a potentially responsible party, you're dragged into the cleanup and you pay for it. Rocks is a big company. I don't, I would say they have, they probably have keep of Pakistan, Barrington, so.
The deeper the pocket, the more responsibility you get.
That's a fact. Having been involved in that.
So, all right.
About the retirement of this site at some point, so I presume, so if they go below the groundwater level, if they dig below the groundwater level, and then they'll be doing pumping, and someday they will stop pumping, right? Because you'll be done with that site. What are your responsibilities for any ongoing management? What, what is going to happen with this site when you're done with it?
That's why I requested a nice perch. It's a pond.
We have our final recclamation slopes that AOT reviews and approves, and it is in fact.
So like, like, like a, any other gravel pit? They have to reclaim the slopes to a certain degree, seed them, maybe.
While the gravel pit becomes something that's there, you see, ledge blasting becomes a pond. It's two different things. So there's actually, yeah, there's actually an open in Rochester, which is basically the same thing. It's a big pond now.
That is your question, Steve?
My youthful hockey was spent in a quarry skating.
Half of my college career was spent jumping off of quarry walls.
That's why we have to.
I guess my question, I guess my question is, is once you are done with this site, do you have any ongoing responsibility for keeping the level at a certain, the, the quality of the water at a certain level or the level at a certain height? Or do you have any responsibility after you're done, I guess is my question?
According to the AOT, there will be an elevation, top elevation where the water would disseminate into the sand and gravel naturally. And that is probably in the southern corner.
I think the answer is no, Steve. It'd be abandoned as a pond, like.
It essentially gets us, it has a natural spillway that it will run over. All right. So do we feel confident that we can come through an agreement so we can have an answer from the 18th?
So the sooner you guys can get it done and get it to us, that we can get it out to any attorneys for them, so that we can try to make it with the R E deadline.
We appreciate the expediency, and we'll do what we can to synthesize the conversation.
It's a complicated.
Need a little poetic.
It's a complicated one for the board. It's very, it's big, and we don't, you know, we've got to do our due diligence. We appreciate your patience with us.
And I, I do appreciate that, but please don't lose focus off the notion that that's the reason we went through your review process, and there is a very specific state permit necessary for these types of activities that we, we already have, and we're going to be working with them.
And I think it's just the proximity to the well that's making the hair stand up on the back of everyone's necks, maybe, that is something that's, well, this is certainly not a common thing for any of us, but this one is even less common with the well. I mean, I understand the proximity for these folks to the well. But if you zoom out another quarter mile as the curve lies, you have the Rochester landfill right there. Which I think is probably in my regard be more concerning than the gravel pit to some degree.
For water contamination, 100%.
Yeah. Right. There's no more parting comments?
From us, no.
Well, I'm going to take a motion to continue to the 18th. I'll make the motion to continue. 236 dash, sorry, wrong one. 236 dash four dash GR dash 20 dash SR two, January 18th. Motion by Andy Knapp, second by Jeff Brand, James Jenison, aye, Jeff Brand, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
All in favor. So much. Two minutes. Two minutes.
Everyone needs to go do a pottering?
Yes. Uh, next application is, um, number, uh, Lindsey's. Robert Russell. I know, I'm like.
I sent for the video, but I don't have that on it.
Okay, I can get YouTube.
Yes.
I mean, you can get YouTube. You know how to run a computer, I guess, but I can, I can help get, get the, the sharing of it set up.
And then, driver said that the drawings were uploaded.
Yep.
Where's the bathroom?
Um, adult bathrooms are straight that way, but you have to loop around like a C. So you'll see a hallway going horizontal and halfway on the right, adult bathrooms. You know where the YouTube. F A. Fowler, okay, yeah, I'm with you. Yes. You can, I'll, I'll keep looking. I'll let you. He's not a musician. Does he look like this?
We can try, uh, Paul and Media and see if he uploaded it, right there, the red one.
This one?
I think that's it.
All right.
Yep.
This one? Your tactile general overview? This one, right? All right, we'll have that ready. And I get the files ready. You know the map and lot off the top of your head? The map and lot off the top of your head? Might be on the application. It's usually the application number. No, you missed one. Which one is it? It's from 25160. Do you know what plans he's gonna want? So it looks like 1215. I can just open it all. You can take a look. Oh, you can tap that green thing. I'll turn the microphone on.
Next up, we have two fifty-one dash sixty-three dash R C dash twenty-one dash S R. Request by applicant Robert Russell from two A Tactical. Welcome, Mr. Lindsey, and, um, I'm having a great crap.
Watson, Dwayne.
Dwayne Watson, thank you. None of you are ready? Saw your videos, very nice.
Yep. Now, well, Scott Franco is from New Hampshire Land Consultants. Dwayne Watson with Unified Builders. Here tonight for two A Tactical and Mr. Lindsey, uh, we were back here in October. Got the patient accepted. He kind of went away, did some work. Um, at that meeting, we presented a different access to the property, which was a north access and uh, quite a bit, not quite a bit, but the two access points have changed. Per that meeting, like we showed you, uh, a little bit different bumper road being booked uh, with an easement across this property, uh, which we submitted to D O T. D O T gave us additional approval on the layout just, um, a couple of weeks ago, or actually on the twenty-sixth of November. They did ask for another minor traffic on, uh, left turn, right turn warrant study, which we hired Steve Pernod to do and we're, we should, see if we had any day spend that to D O T finish their view. I'll start out with playing this video that was created for the site. Uh, it, it's the slides that we submitted. This is kind of a video, just putting it all together. Actually shows all the lighting and everything. Uh, at the last meeting, there was a a comment or a question if we could show the cones of illumination on the building, uh, and that night shot that you saw, and I think there's another night shot that comes up. Shows where the lights are, are shining down.
Should have one like this for the new town hall.
Should do. Should do a voiceover. Let's be cool with a voiceover.
Getting closer. They got the window box up. I C F's up to the top.
So that's it for the video. Let me.
Do you want a sports ring or two?
Don't encourage him.
So, uh, at the last meeting, there was a, there was comments about notes, fire lane signage, uh, some landscaping and lighting. Uh, we went back to the drawing board and added the notes that were asked for. Um, a couple of things we did meet with, uh, Chief Walker, talk about the fire lane. What we came up on that.
Yeah, that's, well, that's all.
So there was comments about some, some notes we eliminated on these five parking spots back here. No sense, we eliminate that. Two spots in this area that we were showing as parking, we eliminated those. That's part of the fire access around the button. Along with that, we added three, no fire lane signs along the edge of this room. So, uh, if a fire truck comes in, no park here and that will be free, uh, no reparking. Signage, we added a couple of those fire lane signage and, uh, we added a sign down here on the location where the storage facilities, the storage units are going to be. Uh, that says authorized personnel not to prevent anybody going up there.
While you're on that point, so that was one of my notes. I noticed that you, you added that and, and in fact, it's, uh, you actually have it in your rendering. You showed, um, exactly that stop on authorized personnel alone. But when I went and looked at, um, uh, the detail sheet, uh, two oh one, I think.
Twelve.
Twelve. That, that shows just a, uh, do not enter sign. So the details, and I don't find a do not enter sign anywhere in the drawing. Think that's supposed to be. If you don't have a detail for the, you know, an authorized personnel alone, so is that a?
And we can add that detail. And the do not enter sign was a, a let go. And we initially submitted where it was out.
If you don't have the sign, which is otherwise authorized personnel.
Uh, another area that needs to be fixed is lighting plan is still not, uh, completely correct. Lighting plan, you have the note there, shows the, uh, it's sheet, is it nine, it's fifty, P L T P. Yep. Um, on the drawings, you show some Ts, but you don't have the legend. That's got to fix and belong. What, sorry, I missed what you just said. Pictures, you have pictures called Ts, they're not in the legend. The, move a little bit, um, to the, right? Legend is, I want you to come back right there. You have W's are on there, but you don't have the Ts on there. Describe your Ts. On the legend, no, I'm talking the legend. No, the legend, legend lighting is, is this right here. It's, oh, but over the other side, you have a legend. Yeah, which is for plan data. It's not. The W's, you have, yeah, but you don't have the Ts in. Um, the other thing that's more important is your lighting is not compliant in that either, depending which level you pick, the medium, high or low, I don't assume you're going to pick the medium. Picking the high and it meets the high, because that was specifically talked about at the last meeting, three point six max. Okay, if you want to go high, the, that means the low is too low, I think. The highest is three point six and that's what we recommend. Yeah, but your low is too low. Low is point nine. The, um, you go with the high, point nine is the minimum and you're right there, you say points, point oh seven, point seven is your minimum right here. I mean, we had professional design the lighting and he went by this criteria, even. It says right here, the high is point six, but the lowest point oh is point seven. Point oh, point nine. And where are we showing? If it, is it on pavement? Is it?
No, on the chart down here, it's maximum three point six, minimum zero point seven.
Which doesn't match the criteria. Not sure how to get this blue off the.
Ron, what are you saying that the minimum should be?
Um, if you look, if you take high, the, the max says point six, point three six, and the minimum should be point oh nine. And here on the drawing, it says the minimum is point oh seven. Point seven. Point seven, but that's, but. That doesn't comply with the requirements. So.
Design works, uh, people works up.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. This minimum is point seven and that's three point six. And yeah, and I can't speak to it directly. I mean, I had a conversation with the lighting, uh, engineer and, and what he's saying is there's certain areas, what's, it's not just a, looking at it as a three point six, three point, or point seven. But it's a parking lot lighting, it's a building lighting, there are different lighting requirements, uh, which is. Yeah, we'll, we'll tell him he'll comply, we'll comply. Though where on the lot, on the lot, is it less than point nine? I've never heard anybody want it to be more than. Well, I can't, I can't, I can't read it on the thing.
Yeah, I can't. And it's, uh, actually on the, in the parking area, which is what was uh, where Paul's broke. On the back parking spaces, along back of the, uh,
There's one by over by the, what, it looks like maybe the dumpster pad type area.
Over, over. On the east side of the parking lot.
Okay.
There's like two, two corners.
And then the other thing too is.
I will point out, there's like two parking spots in the corner.
I, you know, all's up saying.
Interesting. You know me. I'm all for, you gotta make the right. So, looking at the parking lot plan, looking at the those two corner parking spots.
It's a dumpster, it's really a dumpster and a parking spot.
Well, actually, there's three. There's three, there's two, so the total of four parking spots.
In either.
For those four parking spots in the back. That would. Rather than redesign the whole plan.
But the other thing that's wrong is, um, you show three, the plan shows lights on, um, one over the overhang. Yep. And then it shows the light magically going through the overhang somehow and getting down to the ground. Whereas your rendering shows two side lights which are on on the plan. So probably the two side lights that are underneath the overhang are, if you want to. That's not really. Yeah, we don't show the underhang, uh, on the E, you're talking? The walk bay goes in. Lighting plan is showing them that this light right here, projecting light down here, which is clearly not. Well, you can see, uh, hard to see on this. Those two side lights on, on the, on the lighting plan. If it's gonna put them in there, they got in the light.
You, you have two lights underneath the, on the front.
I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, that's kind of a more of a. Yeah, these right. It's out of sight, it's a building. They're reflected on the rendering. They're not on the plan. Yeah, the rendering is obviously for reference purposes only. It's not exact. Well, but you want, you want those lights there. Really?
Okay.
And you want those lights in there because that's the only way to get a light in the overhang. So. Right. Be in there. Just got to be cleaned up. It's not a big deal. Yeah, I'll ask him how, how, because typically you do your site lighting on the building and things that, obviously he must have it. Well, the rendering's good. The rendering is right, right planted. It just doesn't match this. But does we not showing on the, on the site layout, the lights underneath?
Right.
Right. On and going into the build. They're not included in the list right here. So. They would probably be included more in the, in the building.
Actually, they are listed on the detailed sheet for the lighting. They just didn't show it out there.
Yeah, they're on the, um.
It's not a big thing.
Architectural.
Okay.
Structural.
And with respect to the
And you made a lot of spots, hotspots, you got to go with more fixtures. So just pointed that maybe you want to consider taking a waiver. Yeah, I mean, uh, we will ask for that favor for those. Comment. That it's not.
Like to ask for a waiver right now.
Are you asking to waive the minimum?
Yes.
You got to put in writing.
Yeah.
You got to make the application write. You got to be in the paper. You can write it now.
Um, I'll give you the, uh, I'll give you, see what section it's in.
So while we're talking about notes and literature, oh, yeah, working on that, on sheet, sheet two. There's, uh, you have a note twenty-five, the top part of the oil pipe. Says, you have so types, uh, H O B, E C O C, but if you go up and look at the axle. That shows sort of types of H A V and H A C. So.
It should be H A V.
Yeah, so you got to.
This is, I have a suggestion for consideration. You don't have to accept it or not, but end by the loading dock is often useful download. Consider it protected. You know, having a truck over, you're going to have to walk onto road, ever get in, ever receive it, come out. Rather have a tent right there. This is a suggestion.
Typically what, typically what happens is you have like FedEx or you're just delivering and yeah, a buzzer, a lot easier for them.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
One additional question I had is on sheet six, you have a profile of post driveway. And I'm trying to reconcile that with the drawing above it and particular with the drainage shown on previous sheet.
Yeah, it's actually reversed, so. Because we've got the profiles left to right and the, and the stationing on the plan view is right to left.
Yeah. I couldn't get the elevation.
Oh, this is where the catch basin is.
That's where I was looking at. No, you should.
Key nine.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I hated.
Um, shall we?
So what's this?
Comment?
Another, so also like to point out that. Still. Whatever.
Alright, uh, we'll open up public comment at this time. If you're, uh, joining us remotely, star six or, uh, raise your hand or speak up. Harrington, we'll close public comment. Um, do we have the waiver? I have to vote on, I'll take that.
And there was a few more things too that I was going to go.
Okay, yep, please, alright.
We did get the, uh, review engineers estimate to review it. We submitted the check and the agreement for that. By expect the next two weeks. Uh, on the, he's reviewing the drainage on this review and then, uh, I guess there's going to be another contract for the, um, inspection and monitoring of bumper road relocation. Uh, there was a couple of other things that we submitted to, to the board was special event parking. There's an agreement in place with, uh, two A Tactical, Mr. Lindsey. Allow parking in his outfit during any special events, uh, that was discussed in October. Uh, and that will be controlled and monitored by two A Tactical employees. As well as a road agreement, uh, put together for two of the tactical and Mr. Lindsey as the road was determined by the town attorney to be an easement and class six non-maintained road. Uh, so they have an agreement, uh, as the only two users of it right now, uh, to maintain that road. And I believe that was, uh, all the details I wanted to catch up on and I can read the waiver request in if you like.
Please.
It's from section four point oh, general requirements, table seven.
He's, uh, reading off.
Yeah, if you can. You can read it. We just want to make sure we get.
Submit it.
To allow the minimum foot candles to be point seven in the dumpster area of the parking lot.
I found another spot that said. Just.
Just. To allow minimum foot candles, seven. This, the lighting plan still has to be revised and include those two fixtures that are listed on there. So.
Right.
Takes care of the, the, the drawing, the drawing still has to be updated.
Uh, just for clarification, so it's on the architectural and the structural, so you want it on the site?
No, the, the lighting plan.
Lighting plan.
Yeah, just right here.
Is that understood yet?
The lighting shows where the fixtures are and then tells you what the fixtures are, but the two ones under the are not listed on the planning and they're not included in the list.
Okay.
So that's the only thing he's got, it's a.
Yeah, gotcha. No, that's detail. Should be on there.
Uh, Barb downstairs. Language, Barb.
I make a noise.
Well, you can pass to me, I'll read it. Uh, just so I can read it.
Still out.
Okay. So. Not contrary to site conditions. Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I, I make a motion to approve the waiver request of section four twelve. Twelve point two. And to a minimum foot handle post to be seven. Site. Twenty one. Conditions of land and subdivision site indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second. Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Donna Masucci. Andy M. Ron Allard.
All right.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Andy Knapp.
Abstained.
Abstained. Jeff Brand.
Brandon.
James Jensen, I. All in favor, one abstained. Waiver is granted.
The other comments?
I have a couple of little things. So just to spell out, so the DOT is requiring you to reconfigure the end of Bumpford Road. It sounds like what you're saying is that all the traffic from Bumpford Road is go, is going to go on this new newly reconfigured area where interfaces one twenty five has depicted. And you're going to reseed grass and otherwise block over the old pathway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. And Jeff, at a previous meeting brought up, I think it was related to the drainage documentation. There was a document called operational and maintenance plan. That mentioned Chi Chester and stuff that's on file in Chi Chester. Should it, should there be something else in terms of operation and maintenance documentation related to drainage other than this document?
I think they've actually specified now on the print, Steve, the notes on what the maintenance will be as far as inspection, cleaning out sediments. That's actually.
Yeah, all the maintenance and stuff with drainage structures and.
Maintenance on sixteen, page sixteen is a maintenance summary for infiltration bases.
Right.
It's there, great.
Outlets, pipe operators. There's also instructions from here on levels for the basins, what's had to be cleaned out.
That has been added.
It's all part of the.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. This hasn't gone yet, so.
Oh, it's gone to him, but we haven't.
Yeah, we haven't. We haven't got the information.
And I brought it up at the last meeting, doing the drainage.
My question was initially about.
Donna wants to know, wants to know if there's no flagpole.
That's a good question.
She has one we trust yesterday. I know they recovered and DOT is making you do that. That's it. I hate. They can, the trucks slow down to, I think it's ridiculous, but.
What if they come from the other direction?
It, it, it ain't any worse. The way it was before, they, the trucks can come off at a much higher grade of speed and not come to a stop to about one twenty five.
And I think that's why they're doing, is because they are, you know, there's a lot of roads in town. I live on off ramps. That's exactly what that.
If you want to clear traffic on one twenty five. It's DOT's thing, I'm not gonna get into it, hate it, but. The other one, well, that one was close in the section of commercial way, whatever, commerce way, anyway, but anyway.
Yeah, in our, in the set of regulations, it says you gotta have at least seventy three angle for driving.
Not the prolonged, the question judgment of road construction, but not well and buffers. I'm just saying.
I like to take a shot, Jamie, I like to take a shot. Try to cross my body.
All right, do we have any other questions? Um, we want to continue this to. Yeah, do we.
How long do you think?
Yeah, yeah, I think the comments hopefully that made with the drainage is pretty simple in this project. So they're not that extensive and we can respond quickly and be in good shape first, first meeting.
Pardon me? Uh, February, yeah, it's the first.
First, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Blessings to leap year. Our town administration is crazy.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue to February first. Motion by James Jensen, seconded by Jeff Brand, Andy M. Ron Allard.
All right.
Suchi. Jeff Brand. James Jensen, I. Andy Knapp abstained. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There it is. All right, we have a number five, Josh and Cheryl Wilson, one eighteen dash four and two fifty six dash two dash GR dash twenty one dash LL. Request by applicant, adjust boundary lines. Eleven, five five acres of map, lot two, that's be added to map one eighteen lot four. This will increase map one eighteen lot four to eleven.
They can see it. They'll see it on the screen, but they should.
I can't believe you've been dying to do that.
I've never been, had to.
For the record, Jeff Brand is cruising himself.
Jeff, you should run first. Map and watch this one. Have it's the app, the first name, part of the application.
App is.
Yep.
One eight. I gotta, I gotta pull up the guy.
One eighteen dash four.
Yep.
Two fifty six dash two.
Thank you.
Oh, public comments, man. Can't be good for us.
Andy can cut them off in three. Yes, we, we have a three minute rule, remember?
And it's, and it's only when public comment has been called. Select person there found that out.
But you guys have a three minute rule too? I didn't think you could have a three minute rule on the public hearing.
They can limit, they have a right to limit if there's like a lot of people there, but they don't.
Jeff talking, it's like a lot of people.
Sir, this is it.
This is a lot of people, so we'll keep it.
This is what you're looking for?
Maybe two and a half.
Dude laid out one.
There's two. Oh, that's just the application.
Fair enough.
No, not touchscreen. No, just regular computer. Let me just get it sharing. Um, no. Yeah, maybe they're virtual.
Well, you, things over there, you can watch it over there, big screen.
Yeah, it's the same thing that you have, not.
Very much, I appreciate it.
Does everybody has the plan copy? If you need one, just ask that.
You're recusing yourself when you get the. Second class.
Real quick, Mr., the participant with his hand up, do you have a question before we start? I missed you earlier.
Oh, that's the last, that's it.
He does have his hand up, so I don't know if you have a question.
If you're trying to talk, you can hit the mic so we can hear you. Oh, you took your hand down.
Thank you. All right, I didn't want to ignore you if you had a question. All right, whenever you're ready, thank you.
Like I said, everybody has a plan, everybody's all set.
Yes.
Charles Gilch from SCC and Associates, here on behalf of Joseph and Cheryl Wilson. Joe was here earlier, but we outlasted him, he went home. This is for their lot line adjustment application, pretty straightforward. It's a proposal to adjust the lot lines between two of his abutting parcels, tax lot one eighteen dash four and two fifty six dash two. Just to kind of run through where the lots are, they're on south side of Swains Lake. Off of France Road is Finney Way. Everybody familiar with the area?
Sure.
So tax lot one eighteen dash four is the smaller of the two lots. That's owned by Joseph and Cheryl Wilson. It's point two nine acres. Has frontage on Swains Lake, short amount of frontage. It's basically access Finney Way, which is a shared private way. The lot supports the Wilson's three bedroom, single family home, served by its own septic system and it has a shared well with one of the neighbors. The other parcel is two fifty six, owned by the Wilsons as well. This is a much larger lot, sixteen point five, seven acres. It does have frontage on Swains Lake on the other side of two abutting lots, kind of interrupt the, the frontage between the other lot. The lot's undeveloped and it also has access in from Finney Way as well. So basically two lots, we're gonna adjust the lot line between the two. Both the lots are in the general residential zone, both in the same zone and whereas both. Protection zone. So the proposal is simply to adjust the lot line between the two lots. For that, about eleven point five five acres of the larger lot, two fifty six dash two, be added to one eighteen dash four, the small lot. So the resulting adjustment will increase one eighteen four to eleven point eight five acres from the point two nine acres. And reduce two fifty six dash two down to five point oh one acres and kept it slightly above five acres that we'd have to chase down state subdivision approval on it. No change in access to either lot, still. And as we're removing some of that area of two fifty six dash two that was along the lake, it'll no longer be in shoreline protection. So only smaller lot. Gain this new land, it'll be, it'll have two segments of lake, which will keep it in the shoreline protection zone. So for future considerations. Finney Way is, is just more or less an undefined access through here. We thought it would be cleaner to provide a twenty five foot wide easement along the property line that kind of captures that. If there was any sort of improvements or anything that could be done for that roadway in the future, the, the people that use Finney Way will have the right to do that through that lot, kind of cleans it up a little bit. That's really about it. We did ask for a waiver for the section of land that taken from the large lot and deeding to the little lot. We didn't provide topo and soils and wetlands within that area. We're basically adding more land to a small lot to make it a much larger lot, but we did provide you with topo, wetlands. That delineation for the reduced lot that we're bringing down to five acres. So that clearly meets all your citing lots and requirements. So the waiver is for just the area that we're transferring to the small lot up on the lake. So topo, add soils for the entire thing. Uh, no variances are required. And like I said, just the one waiver request. Any questions?
I have a question on the second, and it, it says, I guess, plans or brand's comments, does not affect the right of way. It, it seems to me it would affect the right of way. It was on a different lot before. Now you're combining it from, the right of way was on two fifty six dash two. And now it's gonna be combined with one eighteen dash. The right of way will be on the new, new lot, which is, so the, the new lot, which is, I'm assuming is gonna be one eighteen dash four. It's gonna have the right of way now rather than the old lot. So.
A, a portion of the.
You said it's gonna be wider than it was before. So it seems to me the right of way of the easement requirements have to be transferred. So there is some work needs to be, sure the other houses have access.
Right, well, it's, it's basically they already have rights to Finney Way, the abutting property owners. So the ones that have access to it right now.
Show you. This lot has access one eighteen dash one, one eighteen two, three, and of course Joe and his wife have access to the lot.
Well, my point is that lot right there is the ones got the right of way. No, down the new one, you see the right of way goes across the new, the new addition piece.
Right, one eighteen point four needs.
But the right of way is still in the same place, in the same pieces, it's basically.
Right, right.
But it's gonna be a different.
But it's a different. Yeah, it's a different property. One eighteen four had a deeded right of way to the water, but now one eighteen four is the deeded right of way for the other lots.
Yeah. So there is, there's gotta be some easement language that's gotta be drafted for the new.
Right, right. I mean, they're gonna have to recognize that these people still have access, even though there's gonna be a change in.
And if you're gonna expand it, it's gotta be defined with a new twenty.
We're not actually gonna expand anything. I just wanted to leave area here if there was any future consideration for any sort of expansion or improvement over there.
So you're gonna put a twenty foot right away there, but you're gonna reduce it back down to what it was before. It seems to me you should keep it twenty all the way down, right? Once you're going twenty there, you might as well go twenty all the way down.
You could do that.
I mean, it's gonna be, it's their property, so they can convey that twenty foot easement very easily.
Yep, you just follow centerline of the distance of the roadway.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
Um, I have a comment on that, but first I'd like to address the application, accept that as complete. Forward, that's okay. And does anybody have any questions on the application staff? Do we have all information needed? Thank you. Hi Carol, do we have everything?
I found the application to. Yes, I found the application to be complete. We had everything that we needed to do the staff report and I believe that you have everything that you need to act on this.
Good, thank you. Does, any board members have any questions on the application? Hearing none, a motion to accept the application is complete.
Jeff, I guess I'll do. Make, make sure that we accept the application. Dash two, dash GR dash twenty one, dash, hello? That's, that's complete.
By Ron Allard, seconded by Suchi, Andy M.
Yeah, I.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Donna Masucci. James Jensen, I. Andy Knapp.
All right.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
All in favor, application accepted as complete. Go now to questions.
If you guys could all be, a piece of paper. Yep. There's a question. That would exempt this from having to meet the classic confinement road standards in seven. We sent the question to the town's attorney. Town's attorney answered back, this is a client privilege, that's why I was waiting to give to everybody. Basically what it comes down to. That's conditions of. You could have them sign the indemnification thing as part of this, but Carol had an idea which I thought was really good. You could make the condition that they have to comply with the. You could make the condition that they have to comply with the town's private road regulations. That way, going forward, the selectmen would have a chance to look at the road and the conditions and so would the fire chief and stuff to make sure that if any other, if the development goes in, that that road would meet that town standards.
And that's exactly what.
So you have to set the conditions. If you don't, then they could come in and just get a building permit without having to do anything to that road. That's just to make sure that you guys understood that. That's the reason why we asked the question.
So that'd be another waiver request that they haven't.
No, it wouldn't be a waiver, it'd be one of your conditions of approval that they would have to comply with the town's private road. Because if, if you read the question I asked on the other side, it wouldn't exempt unless you guys made it a condition that they had to comply to.
So if we didn't go with the private road conditions, if we had to grant. Okay, but so we go by with the road private conditions.
Yeah, instead of making them build it to like a road standard.
Yeah.
It's just say, because it's a lot line adjustment, it's not like they're doing a subdivision where they're creating more lots to where you're drawing a, a belt, so. But this would make it so that they don't just automatically get a building permit. This would have come down.
Yeah.
And if Carol's going to comment, we, you know, she was working on this one.
Do you have anything to add to that, Carol?
No, no, I don't. We, uh, we discussed this via email earlier, and I think John has explained it very well.
Thank you. And this is right, Steve's wheelhouse gives an opportunity to upgrade that road with, you know, adding usage down there. I think it's, this is a perfect example of where we can, you know, insert the ability to, uh, upgrade that road. Any other questions?
I'm in favor of that. Um, would there be, uh, is there connectivity to Micah Point? And could there be easement, even if it's not built yet, uh, allowing for that?
There's other landowners in between. If I remember right, I think down there it's pretty wet when you get down next.
Wetland down there as well, yep.
I just wonder if there could be.
I don't think the state would, the road through there right next to the lake with all that weather.
Sure, um, the, the driveway goes kind of around the wetland. I, I get it, it might not be doable right now, but I wonder if there could be an easement allowing for it to be done in the future.
I meant, it's not on their property, it's on.
You'd have to cross one eighteen seven to connect to Norm's Way, it looks like. That's what you're.
There's a little driveway.
If that's what you're alluding to.
Yes.
Happy about that.
And that's just the driveway, really. It's got a name, but it's really just.
Yeah. Is there a house?
There's a house on this, the smaller lot that's being made bigger, there's a house there now. It's actually a good sized house.
On the point two nine acres? The house?
Correct, it's three bedroom home.
Do we see it anywhere in the map?
Yeah, it's on second sheet.
It's right, it's right. Right there.
Yeah, yeah.
The house is right there, that's the house.
Oh, okay. I was, I was, I don't know why, I was thinking this, this little piece, this big piece, but.
Steve, just now I'm.
And did you correct? Yes, yep.
Anticipating what might happen down the road, uh, so to speak, literally and figuratively. Uh, the, any deficiencies in the quality of Finney Road could be somewhat mitigated by having another way of getting in there.
I can appreciate your, I, I, from like what John said, I don't know, the Norm's Way is a good.
Highway.
Right.
And you would have to cross three other properties other than this one to get out to another private road.
Which is Rocky Point Road, Micah Point.
Um, all right, any other questions? Um, question for John, I guess, um, you're asking for waiver of the wetland stuff?
Yeah.
And does that have to be done before construction? They do, do decide to do construction in the future.
If they decide to do construction on that lot, they would have to show at least fifty foot around any disturbed area to make sure that there's, there's any buffers.
So that's a, that's a, is that done by no wetland delineation, done the site yet, right?
There have been wetland delineations, we did wetland delineation.
Town. The lake house. There's a wetland area over here, this, we were just talking about that.
Yeah, but the big, the big piece.
And the larger piece. This is our west, right about here.
Okay.
And map all of this, there's a couple of wetland pockets down here and this one as well.
Really, if any construction goes on, you know, in that area.
In this area here.
Yeah.
Yep.
They would need a full wetland.
But, okay.
All right.
First, because now that we have wetland buffers on our lot.
This would apply anyways. But apply to the new lot.
I figured Jeff would ask that, but.
Some reason Jeff silenced.
Kind of like it.
He's saying a lot without opening his mouth.
Oh, yeah.
Don't look him in the eye.
That's why I'm not looking at him.
Barbara says you need Bernie's in.
All right, well. Uh, we, uh, at this time, if there's no question in the board, I'll open public comment. We have anybody, um, anybody out there? Is it just the next applicant Connor out there?
I don't know who the next applicant is, if you're participating virtually.
Yeah, he's the next.
We can get everyone else's.
Uh, hearing none will. Pardon me?
You may.
Uh, hearing none will close public comment. Uh, final comment.
May I have your other pink papers?
Down please.
Someone steal Jeff's.
Address the waiver, um.
Yeah, get yours.
All right, uh, we. Regulation five point three point one, parent six, related to the portion of lot two sixty six dash two that is proposed to be added to lot one eighteen dash four. Motion for that waiver is in order.
I'll make a motion to, um, accept the waiver from subdivision regulation five point three point one, parent six, related to the portion of lot two fifty six dash two that is proposed to be added to lot one eighteen dash four.
And what's justification?
Because not providing it would, would, uh, provide an unnecessary hardship to the applicant.
Excellent, I second.
Motion by Andy Knapp, second by Ron Allen, Donna Masucci.
Succi, aye.
Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Ron Allen. Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff, uh, Brandon Stain, uh, James Jensen, aye, waiver is granted. I'll read the draft notice of decision.
Should that be simply just adding a note to the plan?
And but they would want to put that on a notice that that would be one of the conditions of the.
Would that be general subsequent or conditions precedent?
To the conditions precedent, because they added to the plan before it gets signed.
And then the right of way thing too, we want to add that as in the right of way. Twenty foot and transfer the right of way to the, the new property, whatever it is.
That would be shown on the plan too.
Right.
Uh, dear applicant, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board at its January fourth, twenty twenty two meeting, conditionally approve your application reference above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Uh, if all the precedent conditions are not met within twelve calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedent, add the following plan notes. Revised, uh, provisions, uh, any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board's signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper plan sets and supporting documents as reported in Article Three with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports of all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meeting the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible eleven by seventeen in PDF format with supporting documents for the town. Number four, uh, correct the right of way to reflect ownership. Number five.
Uh, a twenty foot right of way.
Twenty foot. Correct, twenty foot right of way to show appropriate ownership.
Well, it'd be shown on the plan as a twenty foot right of way, it'd still be an easement on that property. But, so it's really not ownership, it's.
Easement.
Clarify the twenty foot.
Right away easement.
On the plan, yeah, as a twenty.
Clarify twenty foot right of way easement on the plan on the appropriate lot. Five, any construction will require a full wetland.
Building, no building permit shall be issued until the applicant complies with the town of Barrington's classics and private road policy lots. That would cover it to make sure that.
You, get that Barbara? General and sub. General and subsequent conditions, the applicant's engineer shall certify in writing, all improvements have been constructed as approved prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. Where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. Extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board, so long as it's applied for at least thirty days prior to the expiration date. Board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work defined in this section as being the expenditure for at least twenty five percent of the infrastructure improvements required on this approval. Infrastructure shall mean in this instance, construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on the site plan for RSA six seventy four thirty nine. Anything to add?
Go to go back to that, I was just thinking, there needed to be a waiver granted about not having to build that road to the standards to go along with that. That's that.
John, didn't we, didn't we say we want to, uh, comply with the private road requirements, is that?
Yeah, but, uh. Uh, subdivision regulations has a road standard. So if you're not repiring a path, you'll be built to that whole road standard.
Now.
You would have to grant that and then say that you wanted to comply with, uh, classics and private road policy.
Okay.
So you would have to grant the waiver, uh, section on building the road to the standards, which was.
Which is currently established with sixteen foot gravel lane.
Not for the classics and private road, you have to do the subdivision. Which is twenty foot for a private road.
So what is, uh.
I'll give you the section.
Thank you. And we got to put the waiver in the. You have a notice of decision, right?
Yeah, well, you have to vote on the waiver too, so they would actually have to make a request to the waiver.
But the first waiver's not in the draft notice decision either.
Correct.
Then he's.
Does this come about when I realized what was going on after the other stuff was all done? That's when I sent the email to Laura, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing it correctly.
So your compliance to, um, the private roadway standard then? Would it be additional subdivision of the.
You asked for an applicant, a building permit? Then the selectmen have to authorize me as a building inspector to issue a building permit. And after comment from the planning board, there's a policy that they have in place. Um, so if you wasn't doing a lot line adjustment or anything, that's the problem, that's the process you would have to go through now.
Right.
Cause you're doing a lot line adjustment, the planning board could have you build that road to a standard, which is a private road standards.
Okay.
But to do it for a lot line was justification for granting a waiver, so I guess that was.
The waiver is because no change in use.
Right.
Right? That'd be the correct wording.
And road design standards would be, um, twelve point two point one. And what it shows is there was, it needs to be a thirty foot right of way with twenty feet of pavement with, if it's, um, a fill with three foot shoulders, that would be if you were creating a subdivision, creating lots.
Right, okay.
So technically, even though it's a lot line adjustment, it still comes under these regulations. They can waive this regulation as long as you do the thing with the private road, so.
Okay, particularly we're not creating another lot right now, we're just adjusting lot line.
Correct.
Lots and we.
But they don't want to, but to put the town in a position, if they don't go through this process of granting a waiver.
Yep.
And ensuring that that private road thing is met, so that's why. So you would actually have to ask for a waiver in writing from the twelve point point one from the subdivision standards.
Right, but to that, John, you just asked us to twenty foot, no. We should ask for thirty feet.
You can do that, you have a right to?
Yeah, we could ask for thirty feet, I think that's the right thing. Cause it's, it calls for thirty in the chart.
You're just not asking the road to be built to a standard, but you want the correct size right of way, so if ever does in the future.
Yeah.
Because of another future development, the right of way is wide enough to handle it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's still an easement, a right of way easement.
Yeah. It's acceptable. Just a, just a right of way easement, yep.
Do you have any paper, do we got to try to find your piece over?
Scratching one out right now.
So number four, right away at twenty feet, would change that?
Thirty. Yeah. Sorry about that.
I meant to bring up the road standards earlier, and we're got, talking about the other stuff.
And then we're going to provide a waiver for twelve one, twelve two one.
That's road design standard.
Use the unnecessary hardship and as there's no lots created to, uh, go through the cost of building. I would think that everything should be.
We did open it earlier, the first one.
A little bit of a change.
Yep.
Hearing nothing, we close public comment?
I, while he's writing, I guess we'll open public comment.
Jeff Fran, one oh nine France Road. So I'm trying to understand what you guys are waving, right? You're, or what, let's conceptual here, because, uh, we, the planning board has discussed in the past that you end up with a substandard road access into properties. I think that the subdivision regulations are under vision, uh, right now to cleave the fact that if you, there's some confusion about if you've got a private road that it currently says that it only accesses, uh, you know, three developed lots. It's a driveway, and it isn't till you get to four, and then it's kind of sketchy. Then you get to the private road standards, but there's been discussions at past board meetings that if we end up with a road that provides access to four or more lots, whether they all get developed or not. And currently, this right of way provides access to three developed lots. So you do the lot line division with a fourth lot.
Technically, it's four and plus one more.
Right, okay, right. So the discussions the board had basically was those situations in a lots can form. Be, you know, the thirty foot with the base built road standard. It's now as far as paving board, and it specifically addresses in there, the board can waive any of the requirements, uh, including paving. So in this particular circumstance, I'm questioning it, so what are you going to end up with, with what you're doing with this waiver? Are you going to end up with saying that this, this is going to be built private standards at some point in time minus the paving? Or are you waiving their?
No. The intent, the intent of the waiver is to, uh, convey a thirty foot easement. No, the intent, the intent of the waiver is to, uh, convey a thirty foot easement. And upon application for a building permit. Require an upgrade to the classics and private road standards.
Okay, so there's currently, there's what, there's three developed lots?
Four.
Four.
Oh, wow.
That's right, it provides access on.
One eighteen.
The north side, one eighteen, right, one eighteen one, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, what?
What they're waiving is the construction standards of the road is what they're looking for now, they're going to maintain the right of way. But when they ask for a building permit, the selectmen are going to oversee the construction of the private road to their private road policy.
Now, is the building permit for a new building, a new structure, a new dwelling, you're re-subdiving or subdividing the property then?
It's, if there was, there's a, there's a indemnification that has, let's say it was just a garage. But the indemnification that gets signed, but you don't have to go through the whole hearing process. But if it's a dwelling unit or an expansion of a dwelling unit or ADU, then you have to go through the whole design thing to where the selectmen hold the hearing, the planning board holds the hearing.
Alright, so if Joe wanted to put in a garage, then it wouldn't.
It was just a garage.
Trigger it.
If it's just a garage, it triggers it to where there's an indemnification that has to be signed and recorded in the registry of deeds that says. That you're not going to hold the town liable because they don't have any responsibility.
That's fine.
Stand the road.
Okay.
But you don't have to go through the hearing process about with the selectmen on the road upgrade processes. Now, if you do anything that expands the living space, creates a new living space, creates an ADU. Um, then you have to go through the whole hearing process and have the comments from the fire chief, the road agent, the police chief. The selectmen would look at their recommendations along with the requirements of that policy and come up with what it is they would want done. And you would have to, the applicant would have to agree to it before they would allow me to issue a building permit.
Okay, now because we're putting it in there, the select board can override us?
No, so you're putting it in there as a condition that it has to go through that policy, because if you didn't put that condition in there. And you didn't make an upgrade to the road, then he could just get a building permit on an existing road that wasn't upgraded.
Right, so I think the intention is that any expansion of use mandates upgrading the road.
Well, any expansion of use would have to comply, comply with the classics and private road standards is what you said. But I explained what the classics and private road standards is, in a garage, they have to do the indemnification, but there's no mandatory upgrade to the road because all the selectmen do this stuff.
Right, so, but my question is, if they want to do an ADU.
An ADU would, right.
Can the select board waive the road upgrade tech standard?
Technically, yes.
How do we avoid that?
You would have him, you would dictate exactly the conditions you want this road built to as part of the approval for this. And which would be whatever the, if you went by the road design standards that's listed here, you would say he would have to build that road all the way to that standard down to that last house. Which for a lot line adjustment with no gaining lots would cost tens of thousands of dollars.
But I think that's the intention of the board, if they're going to build on two fifty-six, then the unbuilt lot currently. That we desire that road to be built to a town, it's classics and private road.
Standard would be, the classics and private road standards, the selectmen have a classics and private road standard that, well, it references the planning board one, which is this one. But they said for a single family on a single lot, they can go to that sixteen foot wide with two foot shoulders. So that's the standard that the selectmen are planning on using going this step forward is my understanding. There was a whole meeting last night, is more negotiations going on, but. You would have to watch the meeting, I think, to understand.
It was. Right. How do we take it out of their hands?
Tell him, tell him to build the road to this standard right now as part of that approval, if he's not willing to build the road to this standard. Then you wouldn't approve the permit and if that's the way you're going to go, you would actually have him design the road now. So that it met that standard before you approved it, because you're going to want a complete design on how that road is going to be built.
I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the intention of the board. That there's four houses down there now, if they're going to add a house or an ADU or an expansion of use, especially. Close to the water on a narrow road and we're talking about fire and turnouts and all that stuff. The intention of the board was that this road would be built up to a standard not negotiable down the road by some other.
Well, no, well, you're kind of half right. You would have to say the standard is now and he would have to build that road now before the lot line adjustment could be occurred, never mind a building permit. It would have to be the condition of your lot line adjustment that he would build the road to this standard now with a design that you approved. It doesn't hinge on a building permit, if you hinge it on a building permit and you're calling it a private road, technically it would go back to the select. If you put no condition on it and you allow this to be built to this without any standards or whatever. Then he could just get a building permit and not talk to anybody, that's the reason why I asked the question to Laura.
You could, you could craft a stronger board of order to order a future. Such classics and private road application today, saying that the planning board. Mentioned, you know, lot line adjustment and not making the road be built now, is that there be a minimum standard consistent with the classics and private road. Or the classics and private road policy. And it probably lies in terms of the select board would adhere to that because that was the planning board's agenda. That would still leave them and out to make a different decision, but that would be a pretty poor case.
And I think even the condition, the way it was written before, kind of puts it in their own as to comply with it the way that I thought it was drafted.
No, is this?
If you had a letter from the planning board saying, listen, we had an opportunity to make them make this road the standard, chose to not make it do it now. For the financial.
Yep.
But we want, the only mechanism to have a requirement for policy is.
Is it, as long as you have a board that has dealt with enough. Classics and private road building permits that understands the impact of all that. That I, I think you'd have no problem making that case and moving that forward, if you have a very green board that doesn't understand that. They may go a bit rogue, but the other part of that is, what I look at is you have the planning board who's providing feedback on that. You should have the fire chief, the road agent and the police chief are all saying, hey, this was all agreed upon based on this premise.
And the planning board has another bite at the apple when that private road comes through, because you would have. When they ask for a building permit, the planning board makes comments and you make the comment.
Right.
We approved this on the.
Condition.
On the condition that we was going to meet the private road standards when we did the lot line adjustment at the time of the building permit.
The danger.
Go to the select.
The dangerous part of that is we're all gone and we know how we deal with these now, we kicked the, well, I can tell you.
It depends on when that other lot is built on, it might be ten years.
Right, and we always kick the can down the road and say, oh, private road, we can't touch it, given the select.
This one you can touch, you have the authority.
But I'll tell you, last, last night, there was a very long and somewhat messy conversation around all of this last night. That was interesting to say the least.
But I think, I think a lot got flushed out, a lot got flushed out.
And I think that conversation last night points to the fact that. Six seventy-four forty-one, that classics and private road policy is a political decision of the sitting select board period. They're not bound, they can choose at any given moment to not issue another building road on a classic to private road. Or they can make no reply.
And let me ask, they come in for, uh, they come in to divide that again.
If they do a subdivision to create another lot, that would be a planning board approval to make a determination at that point in time what you would do. So that's the reason why I asked Laura, because they're not creating any more lots. If you want them to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a road and still end up with two lots, that, that was where the.
Slips and closed, hold on please, would, um, the way I look at this is that. Even if you, if somebody came in, if they decided to sell off map two fifty-six dash two. And somebody wanted to come in to get a building permit for that, they now from there to the edge of their driveway. For the class six and private roads.
France Road all the way in.
France Road all the way to two fifty-six dash two, to the current, right. But this is like the prime opportunity because you're not impacting. Just if you get anything else theoretically coming down through there.
Uh, if, can we?
Well, technically.
Waiver.
You could do a waiver on that road and then put those conditions on it that he meets those standards.
Or, or certainly, or the intention behind our decision where the. When any structure gets gunned, then, then those conditions apply, so we can put in justification for the waiver.
Correct, correct.
And I think that would give direction to the, to the selectmen down the road, we made this decision now.
Wow, you, technically it's a recommendation.
Right.
Technically, it's still a recommendation.
Well, saying what our intent was when we made this decision.
Yep.
And that would give guidance to the selectmen down the road.
Which they could follow if they wanted to, or they could blow it up.
Yeah, that's, but as long as.
That's what Jamie had.
Clear what our.
For such a large parcel of property, accessing four homes currently, I don't know the condition of the road, do we have? I mean, the comment was no comment, was it from?
Well, we're upgrading it to thirty feet, so we're making some.
Not upgrading anything, we're just.
We're upgrading the right of way.
Did, did the road comment on the condition of the road?
No, this is a lot line adjustment, it's like on a private road.
And if you get a building permit for two fifty-six two, you've got frontage on Finney. That, this, I mean, because this Finney Way here and this Finney Way here.
Finney Way goes all the way out to France Road, not a property. Anyway, you're only seeing half of Finney Way on this plane.
But it only comes out on. Doesn't come out on two sides.
No, it comes out on France Road, it kind of comes down and follows along, then comes here, then comes down here, it goes off.
Right, if you look. Yeah, the other be, yeah, you can actually see. That's what I'm saying, so if you take, if you take access from this Finney Way, portion of Finney Way here to that front lot, you don't have to upgrade that, do you?
They'd have to do from the class five road all the way in would be part of that classics and private road policy. So you guys could say, now I want you to do it, or you say that you're going to have the selectmen do it, the selectmen are still going to look at it from that. Class five road in, because that's where the town road is in too. It's not just, it's not just a little part on the lot, it's going to be all the way from France Road.
Right, you can come from France Road up Finney Way into two six, two fifty-six dash two if they did.
Down to where the driveway is.
Sub and sold off that front parcel.
Down to where that driveway.
But you, so you have to go from here, but what if you take your driveway here?
They, they could, you would go from here to your driveway.
Right, so what if, you know.
If we took it there instead of going down the other way, then it would only be one house out there on there. They'd still be the four houses that exist.
Technically, it's still Finney, no, technically it's still Finney Way, it's a fifth house. So it's just, they're just going the short way about it, I don't know, I'm. It's, it's in, in public commenter, please.
It would just mean.
Four house rule.
It would just mean that anybody, if they, like, it's subdivided, if somebody wants, they wanted to subdivide it again and build farther in.
And then.
Then next person has to do.
Then planning board would look at the.
Right, yeah.
Right. But Finney Way actually extends. Steve goes.
He's not creating a lot, that would.
Yeah, it's frozen, so.
If they were doing a subdivision and creating lots, I would say a hundred percent, make them build a road to the standard.
Yep.
Wouldn't be any question.
Steve, go ahead and chime in, I know you have.
Thank you, yes, um, it sounds like based on the principles we have and the actual rules in front of us. That this should be required to build, be built to class five standards at this point, if we don't do it now, when exactly would we?
Well, it's actually a private road standard that's listed in your subdivision regs because of the five and under and the traffic volume, it's. It's like the fourth aisle, one in on the chat, you got thirty foot right of way and a twenty foot gravel.
Okay, but isn't that the same as class five?
No, class five has what they call the collector road and that's the twenty-two feet of pavement with, I think it's six foot shoulders.
I believe so.
Okay, see this public comment is still open.
Please.
So, number one. I think you're right Andy about, uh, as far as you've got agreed or, you know. But my experience is, even when a more experienced board, I, I would say that there's probably little chance that if someone comes in. I, I need to build a permit on this road, that the select board is going to say, no, you got to upgrade. I, I just don't, based on my experience, see that happen. Second, you guys got to be careful of what you say, because Finney Way, if you look at the map, you're looking at a portion of Finney Way. That goes from where it comes off France Road, but it makes a corner and it goes down, you get thirty feet right of way. But out behind. Uh, up behind here, there's two stone walls that come down through here, including one right here on lot, uh, two fifty-six through one that I know very intimately. Finney Way extends down here, so.
You're talking about, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, you got to be careful about your wording, because that part of it, it, people walk it, but. That's not used as a road, but that is Finney Way, so be careful about your word, or you'll end up upgrading. Uh, forcing people to upgrade a portion of Finney Way that is not.
Well, if you decide to do the upgrade, they would have to lay out a plan and a design that you would approve as part of.
I also share your concern. Or concern that, I mean, you, right now, you've got a tag on these people, you let go of it. I don't know that you're ever going to get it back, and I would say that there's, uh, you've already got, what, four? Four homes down here, that, when you divide up the body, you've got that. There's nothing to say, you've got several acres out behind there, including an area, uh, to the, what is it, to the west of. Uh, one eighteen dash two. Potentially waterfront, so I think there's a high likelihood. Consider all. Typically what's going to happen, typically what's going to happen is you're going to come down.
Right. Just for curiosity. He hasn't shared that with me at this point.
I would like to see the road designed before we approve a lot line adjustment.
Or you could just waive the road thing if you decide to, but it's up to the majority of the board, not one person.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing we got to be careful of is there's a slippery slope, since it's not a subset, it's not, it doesn't meet a subdivision standard. It's a lot line adjustment.
It's a lot line adjustment, so what, do you, do you say you want to build it to that, I mean.
Right.
That, that's the hardship issue, now, if you would subdivide lots, I would a hundred percent say, yes, you can build those standards, no, it ends up lots, but.
And what would trigger that review, that, that level of review or, or design requirement? It would be additional bedrooms or further subdivision of the land, is that my understanding?
Wow, technically, right now, they could require it just for a lot line because of the way our regulations are written, that's what the discussion is. So if they'd come in and get an additional subdivision later on. Then if the road's already built, it becomes a mute point because you're choosing a road that's already built, but if the road's not built because they waived something. Then at that point in time, they could say, okay, you're subdividing, you're creating another lot, now you got to build the road to the standard.
Right.
Um, but what I was worried about with the lot line adjustment when it first came in. Was because we dealt with another one that because it had a planning board approval, it was exempt from the private road policy. So I wanted to make sure that this didn't get exempt to where it could create a hardship for the town in the future because of something being built without no oversight on the road. So that's where the town's attorney said you could waive that road thing because it's just a lot line adjustment and have them comply with the class. You could either have them comply with the selectman's classics and private road standing where it gets built. You could define a standard that the road gets built to, and you could waive some of your standards. I mean, you could say, I want the thirty foot right of way, I want a, a twenty foot wide gravel road down through there, I mean, you got, this board could waive. Portion of the standards, some of, you know, all the standards and the whole bit on the construction, they could determine, they can make a determination right now. Say, you, we want you to design a twenty foot gravel driveway going down through there, all the way down through. And then we'll consider your lot line adjustment, and then you would have to go and look at that and design the road if you wanted that approval. They could say that we just want the thirty foot right of way, which they were talking about before, we're not going to detail what you're going to do the road to for a standard. Until you ask for a building permit and then we're going to rely on the classics and private road policy of the selectmen, which. Was, that, that was my own thing where I believe was the right way, but that's not my decision, it's their decision, so. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure they have all the facts when they make their decisions, so they make an decision they're comfortable with.
My view, um. You know, it seems like a, we're getting a thirty foot right of way, seems like a big hardship, put a road all the way down. If they get a building permit for expansion of one of the properties, that doesn't cause me a lot of hardship. That doesn't cause me a lot of heartburn. Maybe another house would, but get the subdivide to get another house in there. No, they, aren't they combining?
He's got, he's still, he has two lots.
So I can only assume.
So you're still going to be two lots, but it's two lots now. So right now, he could come in and build on that big lot, put a house on it. And then come in and ask for his lot line adjustment after the house, and they say there's no potential to build any more houses. It's already built.
Well, to build a house on an.
He would still go through the classics and private road policy with the selectmen. So in the bottom line at the end, you're going through this process. You just build in the house before you do the lot line adjustment, but it, you know. We're still up to the select board at that time, so.
The front lot would come off of Finney Way, right?
We don't.
All of them would come off of Finney Way.
Because Finney Way.
The first Finney Way, the first Finney Way.
Well, it depends. Where they could put their driveway, any place where they got a right to pass or repass it. So if that right away goes right down in front of that lot, they could follow that smaller section way down. But the selectmen are going to look at it to the edge of the driveway.
And there's wetlands on the front anyway, so they'd probably turn down, a quick turn down and jump into that.
But the, but the big lot we're creating is one lot. So to put another house in that lot, we'd have to subdivide that, right? Yes. So, well, really, my big concern would be.
Really, no.
It exists now.
You're allowed to build one more house, no matter what.
Right.
Right now, it's this lot, this tiny little lot and all this.
Yeah.
Now it's going to be this.
Wait a second. A lot line revision, so the new, the new lot includes, is this, right?
Includes the house.
Includes the house.
Yeah, but then there's still going to be half of that lots left.
All this, and then you got a lot up here.
Yeah, right. But this back lot, so Jamie, include now this lot is expanded to all this.
Correct.
So to make another house on it, subdivide this.
Correct.
But you don't, no, you don't have to.
No, no, he's talking about the lower. He's talking about if he decides a second house.
I, I understand, but even on the waterfront lot, he, he will end up with eleven point, what's his total acreage? Eleven point eight five acres. He has more than enough uplands where he doesn't have to subdivide that to build another house.
Yes, he does. You can only have one primary dwelling on a lot by our regulations.
Right. But, but our regulation is large enough that he could, he has enough to do. Classified as a multi-unit.
He would have to come in front of the planning board to get approval to put a multifamily house out there, and if he, I mean, multi. And the planning board would look at it as part of that site review on the access to that because you're putting multiple houses out there. So the planning board would still get another bite at it, just like it would if it was a subdivision.
Because, because that new smaller becomes the big lot. To put something else on that big, newly created lot, he's got to subdivide that. So I still think, you know, we have a chance down the road if any substantial construction goes on down there for the, with the road.
Realistically, with the expansion of the back lot, he's going to probably expand his house or a garage.
Want to put a garage.
Right, you know.
I don't think I have.
Reason, must not change your use.
He would still have to, because of that, if you approve it, they got to comply with the classics and private road policy. Even to put a garage in, he would have to sign and record an identification to registry deeds that, you know, takes the town out of the library.
What about an ADU?
An ADU would have to go through the whole process where the selectmen would oversee the site of the road because of the expanded use.
Right, but they could still waive it and leave it the way it is.
It's possible, but highly unlikely. From what they're, from the direction the selectmen are going in now and what the comments are, and the way that we're looking at the regulations. Anything is possible. I'm not going to say no.
Right.
But it's highly unlikely.
All right, well, let's.
I don't know how else to answer the question.
So like, if we pull the board and see which way we want to go as far as. Requiring a plan to upgrade the road is choice A, right? Or letting them just do the lot line revision and waive RSA six seventy-four forty-one and.
You wouldn't, you'd be waiving the.
Twelve, twelve two one.
Twelve two.
Twelve two.
And say basically he has to comply with the private road policy part to get a building.
For, for any expansion.
For any building.
Yeah, for any, for any additional buildings or any expansion of, of, say, adding an ADU, something like that.
And well, even if you just do a garage, you still have to comply with the policy for a building.
Okay.
You wouldn't have to go through the hearing with the selectmen about the road upgrading just for a garage. But if it's an expansion of living space or an ADU, then you got to go through the whole process.
Okay.
You, I can get you a copy of that.
Understood.
It's, it's probably going to change here in the next month or so because it's in the process of trying to rewrite some of it.
Start down the end, Andy M., which way are you leaning?
I, well, I'd go with the lot line.
I, I, I think they find the road's too much hardship. I think as long as we have the thirty foot right away and then we, then. I think they really put anything substantial and they require for the subdivision down the road, I think I'm okay with that.
Any subdivision, we treat it forward view.
We'll come back in front of this board.
Right.
I'm going to agree with that.
Steve?
Uh, so to, to adjust to a more reasonable Plan A, I would suggest. Requiring them to build to twenty feet but not paving it at this time.
Do we know what it is at this time?
You would have to have them give you a design showing a twenty foot coming down through to approve it as part of your approval. Like you would a subdivision, you put standard on what the road had to be built to.
Does anybody have input on what the condition of the road is currently? I mean, I don't, don't even know where it is.
It's my last experience with that road, which has only been one time, and it's a, it's a tight road. It's tree lined all the way down through. It's well canopied and.
People use it year round. It's not just a seasonal road.
Right. So if it's, if it's treated on both sides, expanding it would be. You're going to do some, you're going to have some work to do with it.
So can we throw in, what about a maintenance agreement?
That's part of that.
Association, maintenance agreement there?
That would be triggered as part of the stuff with the select board. Because you could say an association, but you can only tie one person to it. You can't tie the other three because they don't have a patient in front of them.
So there is no current association.
Not that I know of. I know Joe plows the roadway in the winter. It sounds to me like it's just a mutual agreement amongst the neighbors.
A lot of those.
Yeah. No surprise.
I'm sorry, Carol, thank you, please.
Yes, thank you. My, my audio was cutting out a lot, so I'm sure I've missed quite a bit. But the early part of the discussion, when you were talking about the conditions. My understanding was that any road width or any other condition regarding the road. Would only be triggered at the time of a building permit application. I just want to be sure that, that I'm getting where. Yes, I mean, the, the current situation is that today, if nothing were done here. Any building permit application would still have to go through this process John has talked about, six seventy-four forty-one and/or. The town's class six private road policy. So this change in the lot size doesn't change any of that situation. If they were proposing a subdivision or a building permit for something, that would be a completely different story. So there. All along has been that any, any condition regarding the road would only be triggered at the time of a building permit application. So I just want to be clear that I'm catching everything.
Yep, I think you're up to speed. There was just some question about doing it now as opposed to later, but. Um, I've, I've got the feeling that we're leaning towards allowing the lot line and going with the thirty foot right away and. And waving, yep, and hoping for appropriate select board action in the future. Seems to be the.
So with that said, then you'd want to grant the waiver for twelve two one. Out of this.
We have. Thank you. I have an application for a waiver for twelve two one road design standards. A motion to grant that waiver. Is what we're concerned.
Make a motion that we, we grant that waiver. Be a substantial financial hardship for the applicant otherwise.
And with the condition that he's got to comply with the class six and private road policy through the town. So that, you know, because that ties the two of them together, that's technically, it kind of is.
Do I have a second? We got a second by Andy M. By Donna Masucci. Andy M. Ron Allard. Andy Knapp. Jeff Branupstein, James Jensen, I, Steve Diamond.
Diamond N.
Six in favor, one against.
The waiver is granted.
Out of the board now because he had to recuse himself.
We get the thirty. Thank you.
So if you go back to your conditions of approval, make sure you got the. Having to comply with. Towns class six and private policies as those are.
I will not read the whole thing. I'll start with.
Waiver, we just did, right?
Well, part of the waiver, that was part of the reasons for granting the waiver was the hardship with the condition that that. That's how. I, I think it explained the action out in the decision.
Uh, right, do we have to?
We have to vote on those conditions.
Okay, so the, the six seventy-four is just going to the select board. Um, so I'll reread the conditions present. I won't read the whole thing. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town prior to any signature.
It's Carol's hand up because she wants to talk again, or because she hasn't come down?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. I just saw the hand up. I didn't know she had a comment before you get to the end.
Appreciate it. Uh, complete paper plan sets and supporting documents are required in Article Three with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. Chairman shall endorse three copies of approved plans, meetings of the condition. Meeting the conditions of approval, the town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible eleven by seventeen in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. Language. For a thirty foot right away. Help with the wording, please.
A thirty foot right away to be shown on the plan.
Be shown. The deeds, right?
Yeah, it would be because it's.
Showing on plan.
In the deed.
Any future construction?
Require compliance with the class six and private, town of Barrington's class six and private. And you'd want that as a no don't think to just clean, anybody buys.
Read that, any future construction?
Would have to comply with the town of Barrington's.
Thank you.
We'll add. Uh, waivers granted, right, those have to be in the conditions present, right?
Yeah, so they'd be that twelve point.
Yeah, so the condition present, six, we'll have waivers granted, subdivision regulation five three one parent six. And twelve two, twelve two one. On subsequent conditions, the applicant's engineers certify in writing all improvements that the construct has approved prior to additions of certificate of occupancy. Where no active and substantial work acquired under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date. Then assigned, this improvement shall expire. Extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote. So long as you reply to at least thirty days prior to the expiration date. On such a sentence for any particular site plan, all plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least twenty-five percent of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, structural loadstone indicated on the site plan for RSA six seven four thirty-nine. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
In our general and subsequent conditions, one of the pieces that we specifically noted is where no active or substantial work is required under the approval and has commenced. Blah 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 blah, the approval shall expire.
Technically speaking, there's no upgrades that need to be done to this, so that's a little asterisk. It says these are standard notes that are on all of them, but they're not applying. So because that's written on there, but there's no road upgrades, nothing to build. So once he changes those notes and adds them to the plan, Jamie signs them, he's got a complete thing. There's no work.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's why there's a little asterisk. Didn't, didn't.
I think the asterisk has disappeared, but it used to be.
Oh, it used to be on there.
All right.
I've left them on it whenever.
A motion?
I'll make a motion to. The lot line adjustment for. So I had a number here. Yeah, I know, it's just. For one eighteen dash four and two fifty-six dash two dash GR dash one dash LL.
By Andy Knapp, by Ron Allard, James Jensen, I, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Say that again, please, I'm sorry.
Diamond, I.
Thank you. Andy.
I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Andy M. You, favor. For you and I forget you. All in favor. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the consideration and have a sleep.
Thank you for your patience and a long evening.
So I'm getting paid for it. I don't think you need to apologize. Have a great night.
Thank you. For the record, Jeff Bran is joining.
You're welcome for that.
I just lost my, I just lost my wetsuit puffers. Number six, two twenty dash fifty-four dot seven dot two dot RC dash twenty-one dash SR. Unit number thirty-eight, Mills Falls Realty LLC, request by applicant to allow light manufacturing. Specializes in storage and office space. Welcome, Mr. Knack.
You got to turn your mic on.
Can you all hear me now?
Now we can.
Awesome. Thanks for having me, guys. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Okay, you're representing yourself. Do you want to try to explain it, or you, would you prefer that I try to explain it for you?
If you wouldn't mind, I'm sure you're pretty good at this by now.
All right, so what happened is this is on Mills Falls Storage Units over there in Rochester border. We looked at their review for what they got. And stuff, but. But they included contractor storage. Knapp was gonna, he's using it as mobile welding, but he wasn't able to fabricate some stuff in the shop. And be able to use it for welding purposes there. And it was one of them gray areas to where it kind of complies, but it kind of doesn't. So I felt it was best to come back to this board to make it really clear. I didn't want him to start operating and then I have to go shut him down. So I wanted to be, you guys understood what he was doing and what he was trying to accomplish in the shop. If you have any more questions, I'm sure you can answer the.
I have a kind of a procedural question to start off with. You know. This is, are you looking to approve this for, for this unit only and not the whole site?
Correct, just for this one unit. He's only asking for this one unit. Now signed, paying statement.
I saw the letters.
Now, the way these are, these are all going to be, they're all condominiumized. So each person takes ownership. So this will be the only one allowed that use if you give them that use. And if someone else comes in and wants to do something that wasn't one of the listed uses, they would come back in front of you too.
Okay, but he moves to a different, different unit. He can't.
No, it's just for this one unit.
This one unit with this one company.
Correct, that's what you're up to. I shouldn't say this one company. Once you've authorized the site approval in that unit for a welding purpose. If he leaves and someone else comes in and does the same exact thing, then they could still do it because they got the approval.
Yeah.
And then there was caveat in there from Rick that I put in there for that notice of decision about him. Making sure that setup inside the building meets the requirement for hot work.
Some code issues, power, probably like that, but so basically approving a unit thirty-eight, is that what?
Just number thirty-eight.
That's just it. So he moves somewhere else, he doesn't move, he has to fly again. That's just it, so he moves somewhere else, he doesn't move, he has to comply again.
Doesn't get, if he moves to a different unit, he's gotta come in and comply again. If he decides he needs two units because he grew, he would have to come in and ask for the other.
Our fault, doing, that's all. And by the way.
Like I said, it's this close to probably didn't have to come in front of you, but I just thought this made it clean.
Do we have a list of?
There was a letter from our, I want to point out, there was a letter from the Butters against it, against.
Yes.
Came in.
I'll get to that in public comment.
And that was an area of, like, when this came before us. Those were items we specifically asked about and it was, no, 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 it's not going to be a commercial use yard. It's just going to be people storing their stuff, like contractors who might want to keep their stuff there, but it was not a, a light manufacturing use. There was none of that tied to it.
Letter against it says it doesn't comply with zoning, technically. And it applies for a site review regulations.
He called a bait and switch. Someone comes in for something and they want to come back with something else. We, we allow them, that, that's not uncommon. So I don't think that letter was, to me, you know.
The letter was saying that it didn't comply with zoning, it does comply with zoning.
Yeah, and it, it just say bait and switches, it, it's not a bait and switch.
But it, but was, but he's implying it was an auto permitted use for that project, not.
He just completely authorized the use.
We did, we did, when he came before us.
I thought that there were con- conditions that were put in there.
That's what the condition was, that's what they're doing.
Yeah, we all, all said, you know, you're proof of this, you won't do something else, you gotta come back.
Correct, exactly.
That's just what's happening.
It was for, um, storage and.
Office, office.
Office, yeah, and then it was, you guys allowed it for, like I say, if a guy wanted to keep his boat there, I have like a little man down, he could.
Well, that was the original.
And then it was for contractor storage now. This is right on the edge, he's working off site, but he might, it'd be like, you as a builder, you kept your stuff there, but you manufactured, you prefabricated some stuff on the site to take with you. This is kind of what this is.
For any day you're working in your shop.
Yeah, and I want to point out too, this unit is right at the back of the property.
Uh, first one, isn't it?
Yeah, no, it's the last one, the last one, it's the next to the line.
Yeah, back left corner of the property.
I didn't say unit thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Oh, I saw that thirty, I'm sorry.
Oh, we, we had the unit numbers that were approved as part of the site review, but when they got built out, we had to do the E nine one one. It had to be even in all four rounds.
So old two forty-six is now thirty-eight back here, the green one.
So the Butters letter, uh, it was a matter of principle for him, he didn't actually have a specific, uh, I think it was about the slippery slope argument essentially, like if this is allowed, then more and more. Uh, but, but that's not quite the way, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the principle, but, uh, let's case by case here. Uh, let's, let's look at the, the details. So he wants to do some welding, so there's fire risk, there's fumes, so what, what about ventilation?
Ventilation, it's what I'm doing there, I'm not doing, uh, like stick stainless, I'm not doing anything that's like heavy, heavy, um, like need for respirator. I do have fans, um. And I, I can do few mitigation from within if I have to.
I just noticed that there's another unit, uh, directly against you, is there maybe a possibility of some smells getting through there? Could you only do this with a door open or something? Uh, I don't know.
I could, yeah, I can open a door, I can run a fan out, I can, I can exhaust fumes if I have to, I wouldn't. Um, the way it works, like, I work in a, a welding shop on top of my buil- business right now, and we have an office inside our shop. And you don't get fumes inside the office, it's through the drywall, through the insulation, it doesn't like to travel that far. So, um, I think with mitigating exhaust fans out the door, that kind of stuff, wouldn't have any issue. And if they have any issues, I'm more than happy to do whatever it takes to make sure that. It is resolved immediately.
Cool, well, you said that, it's on the record, that's probably good enough for me. Um, it's being characterized as light manufacturing, would you be producing, reproducing items in quantity?
In quantity, like, uh, like mass production?
I don't know what you do, I guess, some of what you do more for a living, I can make a better comparison, you know, if, if you.
Well, for a living, I've, I, like, a repairman, I fix things, um.
You'll weld anything?
Yeah, a lot of farm equipment, a lot of. The, the most random stuff that other people don't fix, I just like, I don't like things going to waste, I like to fix everything. And so, anything out of metal, I repair, um, but, uh. I mean, if, if someone comes to me and they ask me to make them a couple of things, yes, I'll make them, people, whatever they need, but, uh. I don't see it, like, I don't have, like, a CNC table, I don't. I don't see myself as a, a mass production company, I'm more, uh, like, uh. Build it, fix it, repair it.
This thing for the manufacturer was the closest thing we had in our ordinance to say I'm going to weld and put something together.
Right, in my interpretation, it's repeated.
Listed as light manufacturing.
I'm building steel frame, you know, I'm building truck racks and you, that's what you do, you put seventeen truck racks together a month and that's a constant. That would be not for that, but if it's a rainy day, someone brings something to you small and you fix it in your shop, I'm not opposed to that because it's, like, like John alluded, I think it's more of a contract storage use. With welding. I, I don't want to see manufacturing though.
Well, I was the one I did it under, we might have been able to look under fast and let me just see it with.
And I don't know how we enforce that after the fact, but, um, and then my other biggest concern really is, if you're familiar with, like, this contractor storage units on two thirty-six and Elliott. I mean, it's a bomb went off over there, I mean, everybody who has a unit over there has three times as much stuff outside the units and, um.
You're not allowed to have storage outside of these units.
That is not going to happen.
Right.
It's set up, they got really, really heavy duty protective coverances. You could technically look at it under, um, hair service if it's welding and fixing stuff, and that's a permitted use in that zone too. So it's got exactly the same conditions of approval as, uh, light manufacturing. I was just trying to find something that's, yeah, he's making something.
Right.
No.
Okay, uh, do we know if there's any other businesses that are in this, uh?
There's another guy that, um, does a little bit of cabinet manufacturing, um, he's. He's not like a cabinet producer makeup, but he has like a cabinet shop set up in one of them.
Yeah.
Um, there's another guy that has, um. Oh geez, he must have twenty motorcycles in there, but I think it's more because he's a collector than it is because, um, he's working on them all the time type thing. The guy that, um, owns. Town place and over there, built a house over on Scooton Pond, uh. Known for the cheesecake guy.
Oh, petty bees?
Petty bees. He, he's renting two of them because he has a mobile food cart thing and he's using those for setting up his stuff and taking his stuff out, but that all fits in that range and what.
Okay, so that's what I was interested in, so this really isn't outside.
It's kind of fits with the other use, like I said, it's this far from me saying go ahead and go in there, but I didn't.
Right.
It didn't quite fit, you know what I'm saying?
Um, as far as operating hours, when are you going to be utilizing this? Although this is a storage facility, you can't even bother. Do we have those in the approval though? Didn't we have operating hours in the approval? That they have to adhere to, I thought we put those.
Oh, they had the contractors, yeah, and stuff, I mean, you use the stuff, so it would fit within, use is going to be compatible with that.
Because you shouldn't have like an open sign really and, you know.
Oh, it's like, it's, shouldn't be a, a.
Business.
Not a business, yeah.
Right. It's a workshop.
Yeah, it's a shop and an office, it's not for people to come into, it's, somebody needs to drop something off, they're more than welcome to, but it's not for, like, people to come buy things or hang out or shop in or anything like that.
Okay, you're going to be storing anything outside?
Oh, definitely not, that's against all the rules for the unit.
What about, uh, so, what about waste materials that are generated from either the welding slag or, you know. Or materials that are waste materials, how will those be stored?
Um, in metal containers indoors and taken via trailer to the scrap site weekly?
What about, uh, excess gas for torches and such?
Excess gas, all of my torches, they're all stored properly with dividers in between everything and I only have what I need, I don't have like.
The hot work thing that Rick's going to have that's in part of your condition was he would have to have it set up so that it met that requirement for the hot work. And he, hot work technically from a fire point of view is permitted and inspected by the fire chief and that's listed in just.
Yeah, that's in the kitchen, it's present over here.
Yeah, I put it in the, I talked to Rick about it and it's in line with.
It's got to be an approved insurance use as well.
Not, and not that, I mean, this is a fire chief, but out of curiosity, is, is that building sprinkled?
It's not.
Uh, no, it's under twenty thousand square feet.
They also got fire separation between the two units.
Are they double, are they double, double sheet rocked?
It's a sheet rock on each side with insulation and it's not a double.
I'm sure.
It's not, it's, it's like a one hour rating, it's not, uh, like a fire separation to where it's considered a separate building.
I'm sure only one hour.
Chief walk.
But typically that's a two hour separation between them, so you have to double up the sheet rock.
The building's small enough so we wouldn't separate them technically.
Is it tall enough that stacking storage stuff like we've talked about?
Stayed under the twelve feet so that it didn't have the high pile storage. As it's, you know, high with the door, then they got an office and they got like a storage area all over them. Got a bathroom in there too. It's a nice little deal.
Oh, yes, um, all right, uh, I don't have any further questions. Can we accept the application as complete?
Mike, give me a second, I'll give.
Accept it, please.
All right, uh, I'm making a motion to accept the application. Two twenty dash fifty-four point seven point two dash RC dash twenty-one and.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Bran, seconded by Ron Allard, uh, Donna Masucci.
Sutti, aye.
Andy M. Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Present.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Bran, James Jensen's eyes. All four, one present. Any more questions? This week can ask any more questions. All right, uh, let's open public comment at this time, um, if there's anybody in the audience, we'd have nobody left, right? Hey, dude.
Are you reading that?
Well, I, uh, yes, without objection, I was just, reckon everybody should have a copy of. And, uh, so, just enter that in the record. Opposed public comment? With, okay, and with respect to his, uh, I agree to P's comment, I don't necessarily hate sleep. Uh, and it's, uh, Mr. Knapp and I brought up that. Did ask a lot of questions when this is going in, however, this doesn't seem inconsistent with other uses that are being allowed in others. Like the cabinet or the person fixing motorcycles.
I, I think those two are different.
Fixing your motorcycles is the intent of this thing, making cabinets more of a manufacturing process, so I think that starts to lean towards.
Not a full-time cabinet manufacturing.
Right.
Contractor working, that's a, he's got a, I shouldn't say a cabinet shop, he's got like a radio alarm, saw and a couple little small tools there, it's not. A full-fledged cabinet shop where he's making cabinets.
Right, so when Northeast Credit Union says, I want a new bench, you know, to put stuff on. Somebody calls him and says, here's what I want.
Um, I got more cabinet tools in my basement than he had in that garage.
Probably got more in my trailer.
Exactly. It's, no, he didn't have, it wasn't a full-fledged setup cabinet shop.
It's more of a hobby, it sounds like.
No, he's a contractor and he has some stuff this week and makes some stuff out.
Gotcha.
Got a dust collection system in there.
Does some, does some custom work.
Any other comments? I'll read the condition, dear applicant, this is to inform you that the Barrington planning board on its January fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting, conditionally approve your application. Above, all the present conditions below must be met by the applicant, at, at, prior to the plan being certified, but. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of site work or recording of plans, once the present conditions are met, plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all the present conditions are not met within twelve calendar months of the day, January fourth, twenty twenty. Considered to have lapsed unless a mission agreed upon extension has been created by the board, conditions precedents. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town, hot work, welding shall not commence until permit and approval is issued by the fire chief. Uh, there are no general, uh, subsequent conditions, uh, is there anything we're missing?
Just a quick correction, I, you changed it, it should be twenty twenty-two.
Today is twenty twenty-two.
From this date.
Oh, I, I apologize, thanks, I thought I was, I tried to fix it. Twenty twenty-two, thank you. All right, a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the application. Two twenty-two dash four point seven point two. One.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Bran, seconded by Ron Allard, Donna Masucci. Andy M. Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Bran. James Jensen, I, all in favor, granted, good luck. Thank you.
Y'all so much, truly appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience.
Awesome work you do. I like that stuff, recycling stuff.
Have a good evening, guys, take care.